Good evening. My name is Kathy Deacon. I'm a school bus driver, school employee for 25 years, past president of the Operation Support Services, OSS. I sat in this room for seven years while Mr. Burson was the head. I just want to encourage each and every one of you, the reason we are suffering tonight is for decisions that were made during that period of time. The Proposition MM, all of these new schools that were built, the schools eminent, domained, if that's even the term, property, multi-dwelling house property. It sent our children out of San Diego County, created extra schools, and at the time there was a task force, and they said we needed high schools. What did we build? We built elementary schools. Today, you would not be seated here today trying to close schools if we didn't have so many elementaries. I know from past experience, there are charter schools sitting there like buzzards waiting for our property. Along with that comes our ADA. We will never be able to pull ourselves out of this unless there is some creative thinking going on here. I need each and every one of you, those kindergarteners of that era are now juniors in high school. I need each and every one of you to be conscious of the fact that your decision tonight is not just a decision for 12, 13. It is a decision for 10 and 20 years down the line. I encourage all of you, use the business principle. Spend a dollar, earn seven. So you might have a bottom line, and you say, "We cannot spend that $1," but please look to the projection that that dollar spent will bring in $7. You, please, members of the board, please think very, very long and hard about the decisions you make today, tomorrow, up till the fiscal year starts again. For the sake of the children, the parents in this district, I just cannot urge you enough. You've mixed up their lives. I looked at one of these little things that you had to save $400,000, and you were going to affect 6,500 students. Do you know that's 70-something dollars a year per student that you will gain? I bet you if you said, "Hey, parents, give us $7 a month for the 10 months your kids are in school," and there won't be any changes. Do you know those parents will probably give you $10 a month for the 10 months of the children in school? 6,500 children for a savings of $400,000. A lot of you don't know me. You know me now. I'm semi-retired from the union activity, but when I have to come out, I'm going to come out and I'm going to give you guys a history lesson. God bless you all, make the right decisions.
I'd like to now ask the Navy JRO TC color guard from Patrick Henry High School to please present the colors. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the rich of standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kerry, colors. Ready, cut. Roy, face. Ready, cut. Port, colors.
Thank you. Please be seated. I would like to welcome everyone present today, and it's a great-looking crowd, and those watching the broadcast and call the October 25, 2011 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish, yes, we do have all board members present. If you wish to address the board today, and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like our ASP student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. We have Donner Good from Patrick Henry High School. Donner?
Hello, I'm the ASP president at Patrick Henry High School. Currently, my ASP has been consumed with planning for homecoming, the pep rally, the dance, the game. We'd like to invite all of you guys to enjoy, or to accompany our game. It's October 28, this Friday, at 6:30 at West Hills. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Donner. And Erica Vanstrom from La Jolla High.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm the ASP president from La Jolla High School. Also, we have been working on homecoming and pep rally and whatnot. Our game is November 4. We have a big surprise, as it's our school's 90th anniversary, so I hope you all can come.
All right. Thank you, Erica. Okay, we will move to our student presentation from Crown Point, our junior Suzuki Violin Academy. Mr. Barnett?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the board. We have an exciting presentation tonight. The Crown Point Music Academy and the Suzuki Violin Crew, headed by their teacher, Stephen Lux, and I'd like to introduce the principal, Liz Castillo Duval, to make a quick additional introduction or comments.
Hi, good evening. I have the honor of being the principal at Crown Point Junior Music Academy, where we like to say that the family that plays together stays together. So you'll notice that we have a lot of our parents who also take the music class, under the direction of their Suzuki violin music teacher, Mr. Stephen Lux. So thank you, and I hope you enjoy them as much as we do every day.
You guys can stay.
We'd love to.
Yeah. Another big hand for our Crown Point Violin. All right. Top That Superintendent Koba with your administrative assignment.
President Barrera, community, board members, staff. I have two parts tonight. First, I would like to make the announcement of employee appointments. Kerry Ree to program manager, Special Education Department. Carlos Ramirez to vice principal, Zamorano Elementary. Sarah Leonard to vice principal, Miramesa High School. Angela Bruno to vice principal, Encanto Elementary School. Andrea O'Hara to business manager, Early Childhood Development Programs. That are all the assignments that I have for this evening. What I'd like to do now is defer my usual bi-weekly report. I have invited the CEO and president of School Services of California, Mr. Ron Bennett, to provide a presentation to the board and community at large tonight. Ron is considered one of the state experts in school district financing, and I thought it was very appropriate, given the conversation of a few weeks ago when I talked about the great challenges that the school district is in, the result of the deep and prolonged fiscal crisis of the last four years, the fact that we have had to cut either personnel, programs, or some support functions, over $400 million in the aggregate, and now are at a crossroads of how and what to do now with the possibility, the real threat of mid-year cuts followed by significant reductions for next year, all driven, to some degree, to a great degree, I should say, by this unprecedented historical fiscal crisis in the state. I thought it would be very appropriate for Mr. Bennett, for Ron, to focus us on what we have to deal with in terms of the current fiscal setting, the mid-year triggers, the whole budget process, roles played by various entities, including the county, the state, and other support groups, and to go forward, share with you in context where he thinks the issues are, and allow for you to ask questions of Ron, provide commentary. So I would like to turn it over to Ron now.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Bennett, thank you for coming here tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Koba, Mr. Barrera, members of the board, members of the public and staff. It's my pleasure to be here. I will tell you that I've had better openings than having to follow a performance like that. And it does remind us why we're all here, and those kids were just outstanding. And so it always reminds us of some of those Sophie's choices that boards have to make when you're making those choices about the programs you're going to retain. There's a group of children just like that in every program in the district that needs that program. And in states where the state legislature actually supports and funds public education, you don't have to make those choices. But in California, you have made hard choices, and the battle's not over. We still have a couple of years to go, in my opinion. So I'd like to kind of go through, as Mr. Koba said, three basic topics. One, what are the state budget issues now as they affect you? Two, what has the state done so far that has made your district vulnerable? And then, three, what if things go wrong? And what happens if the state has to step in or the county? And as Mr. Koba said, this is for you. I'd like to take questions as they come, and so, Mr. Barrera, if you'll just moderate that, I'm happy to do whatever you'd like to do.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So we've got the three issues that we want to talk about. Let's go into those current budget issues. I'm going to try to be brief and then make sure that we do have time to answer your questions. So we had a rare event this year. We had an on-time budget. But we had two budgets. On June 15, the state passed a budget, the legislature sent it to the governor. This is the first year we've had Prop 25. If the state legislature didn't pass a balanced budget by June 15, they stopped getting paid. They sent the budget to the governor on June 15. He vetoed it. The state legislators stopped getting paid. They submitted a new budget on June 30. And when they submitted the new budget on June, actually, June 28, it was signed on June 30, that budget was said to be balanced without any gimmicks. And I'm going to show you in just a minute that that is not quite true. So we do have a budget that appeared to be balanced. The budget that was vetoed assumed a list of cuts, and I've shown them on this slide, but basically that we'd get more money from the feds, that we would sell some state properties. And bad ideas have a way of getting legs in Sacramento. We're going to sell the properties for $1.2 billion and then lease them back over the next 20 years for $3 billion. This doesn't sound like the math that we'd like to have. So these were some bad ideas that were included in the budget. They were dropped, and then the legislature said, "Okay, we're going to balance this budget by adding $4 billion in revenues for this year." And I'll talk about those revenues a little bit more. Okay. So this thing was moving a minute ago. There we go. All right. So on this slide, if, this is kind of a complicated slide, I think the message will be clear. If you go to the left margin, in 2010-11, the state spent about $88.5 billion. How did it spend it? With about $78 billion of permanent revenues, and then about $10 billion in temporary taxes. So the governor's first proposal last January is, "We're going to continue the temporary taxes. We're going to have flat funding. We're going to continue to spend at last year's level." As the year wore on, it became clear that the governor was not going to get his temporary taxes. But a couple of other things happened. By May, the economy was moving ahead smartly, and not a real robust recovery, but at least we'd stopped sinking, and we were projecting 3% growth this year, 4.5% next year. So in May, when the governor did his May revision, he added in $6.6 billion in revenues. Now, we at School Services follow these numbers as close as anybody in the state, and we actually believe that that number was a good number, that it was valid, that those revenues would be there at that time. Since that time, two other things have happened. When that budget was vetoed in June, the state added this other $4 billion. So on this slide, what you have is, on the left, you have the $88.6 billion that was spent last year. On the right, that purple-colored line that slopes upward takes us to about the same spending level this year. It's made up of about $78 billion in permanent taxes, about 6.6 assumed growth from the May revision, and then the $4 billion that has been phony from the start. And so that $4 billion is very troublesome to education. Education didn't get a dime of that $4 billion. But we are on the hook for K-12 to take half of the cut, and higher education and community colleges to take a fourth of the cut, if in fact that those revenues don't materialize for the state. So when we look at the $4 billion up there at the top, that's the target. That purple highest sloping line is the target for state receipts. So now I'd like to take you to the lime-green line, at least that's what it looks like to me on the screen, with the four dots on it. And the first dot is the beginning of the school year, and then the second dot is where the July state revenues actually came in. If they were on target, they'd be on that purple line up there. Then the August revenues, and then the September revenues. September being pretty significant, because that's one of the larger months. And you can see that the revenues are coming in below the $6.6 billion line. They aren't anywhere near the $10.5 billion line, right? So we now have in state law a provision that says that it is automatic. If in December, the State Department of Finance predicts that those revenues will not materialize, the cuts will be made. It takes a change in law to change that. The last week of the last legislative session, the legislature proposed a bill that would have softened that trigger. The governor vetoed it. So we have, the economic picture is bad. The political picture is, we have an election year coming up. Nobody wants to pull that trigger. And so there will be a battle of the economics and the politics somewhere along the way. So by December 15, the Department of Finance does their number, the Legislative Analyst Office does their number. By the mid-November, those two numbers are compared. The higher number is used to determine whether the forecast will be met. If the forecast comes in less than $1 billion below the forecast, there are no cuts. But the next billion down, as I said, goes to community colleges and to higher ed. If we have more of a shortfall than that, in other words, state revenues come in $2 billion below that $88.5, then K-12 starts to participate, and we take the whole next $2 billion, even though we didn't get a dime, out of those projected revenues. And there was a manipulation that was done to keep us from getting those. On the automatic, Prop 98 would have gone up by 40% of those revenues. We would have gotten $1.6 billion. State manipulated that so that we didn't get a dime, but then turned around and said two things. One, we are not going to give you any of the money. And two, even though we're putting this cut into the budget, you are prohibited by state law for budgeting for that cut. You must spend the revenues as if that cut will not occur. So that's a very confusing message to districts. Spend the money, but maybe there will be a cut. Leaves you very, very vulnerable. We'll talk about that more. So the cut would actually go into effect on February 1. We have a shorter school year that was offered to save districts some money. And this is a really bogus option. First of all, you won't find out about the cuts until far too late to be able to negotiate and implement that cut. And then, are you going to move high school graduation dates and things like that around? Second, when you pass a law in the dark of night, and the assembly members and senators vote on it without even seeing a printed copy of it, you make mistakes. And one of the mistakes that was made is that if you take those seven days, for a district like yours that has used furlough days, your teachers would all have a permanent loss of income from retirement for life, because they would not get a full year of service credit if you did that. And so the state has said, "Well, if the trigger gets pulled, we will deal with that in the spring." Well, your teachers should not be asked to give those seven days until that is fixed, if at all, and it won't be fixed in time for them to even give you the seven days. So this is a bogus option, and you should just write it off. You're not going to get that. If the trigger gets pulled, you're going to lose the money right out of your ending balance. You're going to have to then make cuts for next year to get it back. Okay? So graphically, this is what the trigger looks like. That's the $4 billion. No cuts for the first billion lost, higher ed and community colleges for the trigger one, and then you'll hear it referred to as trigger two, and that's our $2 billion there. You would lose about $260 per student from the revenue limit, plus half of your transportation money for the entire year. So that's a big number for your district. Okay. So timeline looks like this. The Legislative Analyst gives their findings on the budget. Department of Finance gives their findings. Those two determine whether the trigger is pulled. Then just a month later, the governor comes out with his January budget. So if in fact the triggers are pulled, I guess what I'd like you to think about isn't so much whether the trigger gets pulled. The economic conditions have changed. In May, when the state stepped up its revenues, California was expected to grow 3% this year, 4.5% next. As it is now, California is growing less than 1% this year, projected to be less than 1.5% next year. So we've lost 2/3 of the growth that was counted on for that $6.6 billion, not to even mention the $4 billion that was added over and above it. So what I would encourage the board to think about is that if the, whether the triggers get pulled or not, whether the economic and political tug of war goes either way, the economic conditions that caused the revenues not to be there will carry into next year. So the governor will have to deal with this one way or another, either in the current year, next year, or both. And so your district is very vulnerable, not just to the whims of the legislature, but to the economy itself, which is recovering, but at a much slower rate than ever anticipated. Okay. So questions about any of that before we get into the actions by the state?
Mr. Biser?
Yeah, you had mentioned that if the trigger is pulled, that there will be consequences in terms of the budget allocations to school districts that are funded through ADA. What about all those school districts that are not funded through ADA?
So the districts that are not funded through ADA are called basic aid districts or excess property tax districts, and they or excess property tax districts, and they get a cut that is exactly the same amount that the revenue limit district cuts get. So, they take that cut in a different way, but they remit those funds back to the state in the same amount that a revenue limit district would remit. Now, some of those districts, five years ago, we had about 50 of them. Now, we have about 130. Did 100 or 80 districts get rich? No. You become a basic aid district when your property taxes are higher than your revenue limit. So, when the revenue limit gets cut 15%, a lot of districts that were 5% or 10% below the property taxes, or below the revenue limit with their property taxes, all of a sudden became basic aid, and they were actually getting less money than they'd ever gotten before. And so, the big district like Carlsbad, Carlsbad is basic aid by like 50 cents, but they're called basic aid. But they backed into it because of the cuts, not because they suddenly got rich.
So, to what extent are they, what would be the cuts then? Would it be percentage?
So, they get a dollar, they get a percentage of whatever their revenue limit would have been, so that it is equivalent to the same percentage that you get on your revenue limit. And they've taken that cut every year. So, this isn't something that's proposed just for this year. They've taken that cut every year from 2008-9 on, just like you have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
So, when the governor's finance director makes her decision in mid-December, you know, is she likely to just simply say, "Well, we're going to look at what's happened for the first half of the year and just multiply that by 2," or are there, you know, factors that she's going to take into account that would, you know, sort of...
So, that's a great question, because when the Legislative Analyst Office makes their projection, they will have four months of actual data, eight months of projected data. The biggest months are in the spring.
Right.
And so, the estimate of what's going to happen in the spring, and they'll look at the economic forecasts, even though the economic forecasts haven't been very good. Most economists did not predict the recession, and they haven't turned to predict a recovery, and they've pretty much missed it. But they'll look at that, and remember that the Legislative Analyst Office is an independent body, and they will, they do good work, and they'll do a good calculation. The Department of Finance, Director of Department of Finance works for the governor.
Right.
Could the estimate be a billion or two different?
Right.
And be believable? Yes, it could.
Yeah.
And so, when that estimate's made, it'll be made for the Department of Finance with about five months of actual data, seven projected with the big months all out there that are projected. So, this is going to be a really sporting proposition. Today, I would say the fundamental economics are not good enough to get there, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be projected that way. But even if it is, that's why I encourage the board to think about it in two ways. If the political will isn't there to pull the trigger, I think that the state can avoid that. But if the economics aren't there to provide that money, as we roll into '12-13, I think we get another year of volatility. So, we have two problems in Cali, we have more than two. But there are two money problems. One of them is that we are nearly last in the nation in what we get, and the second one is that it is so unpredictable that you don't know what to plan for. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
You just mentioned the political will to pull the trigger. So, the trigger isn't automatic based on projections? Does the legislature then have to proactively vote and say, "The trigger's been pulled, and these cuts go into play"?
So, the, I followed you partway. Let me just say what it is. The current law is the trigger gets pulled with no further action from the legislature.
Okay.
If they want to delay it, they have to pass a bill. They tried to soften it, and the governor vetoed that bill, but he might see that differently in November or December.
Okay, well, that's what I thought, but I thought you said that if there's not the political will to pull the trigger, as if there needed to be a proactive, so they need to un-pull it.
So, if there wasn't a political will, they would have to pass a bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but we have a majority vote. We have a majority Democrats. The Democrats own this whole situation. The budget was passed on a majority vote with no Republicans voting for it. AB 114, the bill that created the triggers, that prevented you from budgeting for those triggers, all of that was on a majority vote with no Republican votes. And so, you can see that if this trigger gets pulled, it's really egg on the face of a lot of Democrats in an election year, with redistricting occurring in June, and the open primary where the top two vote-getters move forward. A lot of political changes, a lot of instability this year. Okay, so, let me move on by some, and show you some of the things that the state's done to make you vulnerable. So, we've talked enough about the state's economic problems, but the state's commitment to public education in California is far below what it is in other states. And by that, I mean, we have the highest class sizes in the nation. We have the lowest number of classified employees. We have the lowest number of administrators. We have the lowest number of nurses, librarians, counselors. We're in the bottom five in all those categories. And so, when, I grew up in Southern California. My parents and grandparents had made a big investment in California education. Our funding was in the top three in the nation. Our test scores and the student performance was up there. People moved to California because we had the best schools in the nation. That was one of the reasons that they came here after World War II through the '50s and '60s, our growth period. Those are the people that built California. But this year, and the last four, we've been eating the seed corn, and we're not planting a crop for the future. And so, so, we're near the bottom. And this recession took, I mean, we were at the bottom when the recession started. And so, this recession has simply taken us even further down. We were 46th in the nation in per-student spending. We're now arguably last. Texas, Arizona, Nevada, and Utah were the four below us. This year, they're all adding something to education, and we're looking at another cut. So, you know, we could, but if you're in the bottom five, I don't suppose it matters much. But these cuts are deep, they're broad, they're long-lasting cuts. They're going to be with us for a while. So, let's look at what some of them were. So, remember that in 2007-8, the high-water mark, that's the most you ever got for your students. We're 46th in the nation. So, in 2007-8, we take a 15% cut to the revenue limit, that's about 2/3 of your budget. We take a 19.84% cut to the categoricals, that's the other 3/4 of your budget. And those cuts are ongoing today, and I'll show you that in a graph. So, then in, yes, sir?
I don't think most people who are watching know what the revenue limit is in relation to ADA and all that. So, maybe you can just explain that a little bit.
So, let me explain that. Thank you for that. The revenue limit is an amount that your district receives that is roughly equivalent to the other districts in the state. First, it is filled with your property taxes, and if they aren't enough to give you the full amount, the state fills in the rest. About 2/3 of a district's money come from that source, a typical district. That is your discretionary money. That's where teacher salaries get paid. That's where the maintenance and operations, the utilities, everything gets paid out of that. Then, we have this other set of money called categoricals or restricted programs, where typically you don't get the money unless you do the program. Class size reduction would fall into that category and other programs. And so, those, the board has less flexibility, although you've been given temporarily more flexibility over the categorical money. So, after they cut it 20%, then they said you can use it in some different ways. And thank you for letting me explain that. I know the board understands that, but we want everyone to get this. Okay, so, so, then '09-'10 rolls along, and in '10-'11, both those years, the state proposed significant additional cuts, and then reversed them at the last minute. So, in 2009-'10, we had the latest budget that, I'm sorry, '10-'11, we had the latest budget in the history of the state, and during that year, the governor held out all the way through, "We're going to cut you an additional 3.85%." In October, when the budget was passed, that cut was reversed. And so, we didn't take the cut. But districts in March believed they were going to take the cut. They issued layoff notices. Some closed schools. Some did a lot of other things to try to get their costs down. And then, in October, when the budget passed, the cut wasn't there. Okay, so, we also got federal funds that backfilled some of the cuts temporarily. So, then we come into '11-'12, and the budget for '11-'12, again, proposed a cut. And that cut wasn't made, but we got something that might be worse. I'm not going to cut the budget in June, but I might in December. Well, that, what do you budget for? And by the way, we're going to help you with that. We're going to pass a law that says you can't budget for the cut. And so, that leaves you basically with no protection if that cut occurs, and that's the situation you're in now. So, you have that trigger cut. I talked about the $260, the 50% of the transportation dollars. That's what, that's what you have at stake. This chart, which I invented this creative name, the alligator chart, because it looks like the jaws of an alligator, and this is what swallows up all the money. So, it, this is, looks a little complicated. It's not so much. In 2007-8, this is your district, by the way. This is not a statewide average. So, in 2007-8, you received about $5,787 per student in revenue limit discretionary funding. That's what, that's what this district received for each student. If the state had funded cost-of-living adjustments, you would now be receiving $6,496. So, you would have gained about $800 or so. That's not what happened. The lime-green line shows what would have happened if you got flat funding. That's not what happened. What happened is that bottom line. And so, in 2008-9 and '09-'10, look at those dramatic drops. And then, 2010-'11 and '11-'12 are shown up here. You're currently funded at $5,213 per student. $5,213. And if you compare that with the $5,787, that's your ongoing loss. If that mid-year trigger gets pulled, on the revenue limit side, the $5,213 drops by $260 per student. You go to $4,953. $4,953. You were funded at $4,953 about 11 years ago. So, that's when your revenue limit would have been that low. You'd have to go back about that far. And on top of that, then, from the categorical side, you lose half your transportation money.
And Mr. Bennett, if the state had honored the voter-approved Proposition 98, what would that level be approximately?
So, the voter-approved Prop. 98 would have given you the $6,496. But voter-approved Proposition 111 gave the state, I don't mean to use technical terms, but it gave the state a number of ways to wean you out of its obligation. And it has done that over and over again.
Yeah.
Okay? So, but that's the most meaningful chart in the ones I'm giving you, because that's your district, and you can see the most you ever got was '07-'08.
Yeah.
And look how much you have declined.
Yeah.
And that's what causes, if you, you'll hear that you have a 20% deficit factor, 19.75%. That means that the difference between what the state is giving you and what it owes you, the bottom line and the top line, is 19.75. Well, most of that, some of it is money that you never had. The cost-of-living adjustments, that would be from the lime-green line up. But from the lime-green line down, that's money that you once had.
Yeah.
And that's real money that you were paying people with and employing people. 90% of your budget goes to people. So, when I see a dollar cut from your budget by the state, I see 90% of it being people. And the state has tried to do an elegant job of separating itself from layoffs and from program cuts. The state will say, "We cut the budget, but look at those nasty districts cutting all those jobs." And I try to make sure that when I speak, that we put that nexus in there. When the state legislature votes to cut you, they know or should know that 90% of that is going to be reflected in people. It's going to reflect, it's going to result in cuts to jobs at the local level. And that's happened all over the state. It happens in Sacramento when they pass the budget cut. That separation simply doesn't exist. You are the agent of the state in pulling the trigger, not the trigger on the revenues, but on the budget cuts. But it is the state that made the cut. And you look at that graph, and there's no one that would look at that graph and say that the state of California is placing a high priority on public education. Every other area of the state budget has grown during that period, except public education. So, okay, all right. And we've taken the big cuts. So, why are you vulnerable? You're vulnerable because, first of all, the state's minimum reserve requirements are absolutely pitiful. And this district in Los Angeles are the two that have a 1% reserve. That is two days' payroll. I was in Long Beach as a deputy superintendent 20-some years ago, and our reserve was 2%. So, we had four days' payroll.
We have 2%.
Right? And, and so, I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought statutorily, you only had to have one. Okay, all right, okay.
We're at 2% reserve price tag.
You are at 2.
Yes.
Right? Okay, because I think the statute would allow you to go to one. And so, so, but we're quibbling about two days or four days, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't do that. But, but the point is that when, most of the districts in the state that are 3% districts, when they have all the minimum reserves, they have six days. Would anyone run a large enterprise with total reserves of six days of payroll? I don't think we would, especially when you're receiving 20% of the money that the state owes you in the following year. 20% of your total revenue limit, 45% of what the state actually owes you.
Right.
Your money comes from property taxes, and it comes from state aid, and the state has deferred its share into the following year, about 45% of it. So, that means that you're borrowing money because you're spending it in the first year, getting it in the second year. You're borrowing when the state can't. Okay, so, that's another vulnerability. So, ironically, the state has brought virtually every big district in the state to the brink. And I say the big districts, because the big districts tend to be the ones that have the most needs for students, most needy students. They're the ones that tend to have a lot of political pressure. They're the ones that tend to be, want to offer comprehensive programs across the board for students, like the program that we saw tonight. What a wonderful program. And big districts get pressure to maintain that longer. Big districts are more subject to seeing the results of those budget cuts. For example, I was asked about your district. Was it a good idea to bring 300 teachers back? And my response was, "If you have the lowest class sizes in the nation, and you have any hope that you're going to be able to pay for them, why wouldn't you do that? Why wouldn't you bring them back? My child, if he goes in your district, is going to be a third grader once, and I need to treat that, that year as a precious year and provide all the support that we can." So, fundamentally, as a business guy, I say, "Well, you probably didn't, you know, you were taking a risk by bringing teachers back." But as a policy matter, when California has the highest class sizes in the nation, a board faced with that, might take that risk. And it's always a risk assessment. What are we doing, and what are the consequences? Okay, so, past intervention by the state has generally been caused by mismanagement in the districts. And we have a court that decided in 1991 that the state of California cannot allow a district to go bankrupt, that the state has to intervene. And we're going to talk about what that intervention looks like in just a minute. But isn't it ironic that if the state simply funded you at the level that you were funded in 2007-8, or simply stopped cutting you, or, you know, if the miracle occurs and you get back up to the line where Prop. 98 is, you're adding millions of dollars to your budget, but instead, with the threats of cuts, the state creates the situation for you. But the state has an obligation to step in if you get too close to the brink, and we'll talk about what that, what that looks like. And, and you're going to be making cuts, one way or another, every year till this economic crisis is over. So, we're not going to get more money next year. The crisis will not be over. There isn't enough time for next year to be that good, especially since we've lost about 2/3 of the programmed economic growth that we thought we were going to get. Okay, so, that brings you, again, a lot of that was about your district and what's happening now. This is some process stuff about what happens if, if you do go over the brink. So, the first thing that happens is the county superintendent is required to step in. The county superintendent is required to provide some fiscal oversight. A fiscal expert, I've served as a fiscal expert lots of times. A fiscal expert has no powers over the board. A fiscal expert simply helps the district to look at options that would balance the budget. In a district like yours, I would submit that your own staff will have already done that, and that a fiscal expert isn't going to... that, and that a fiscal expert isn't going to uncover much. I would not be hopeful if the board said, "We want you to be our fiscal expert. Go find us a few bucks." I don't think I would find much here.
Mr. Bennett, could you do maybe a favor as you're going through this and give us a sense of the timing of when these things may happen? We have our December 1 interim. We have our March 2 interim. Is it when the county can certify? Is it when we can't actually pay checks without them bouncing? I mean, where do these different steps occur within that process?
Another great question. So let me just put some times around it. Part of AB 114, where the state prevented you from budgeting for the cut, the state prevented the county from stepping in during your budget approval process. So your budget was submitted in June, approved in August. The county was prohibited from exercising its oversight authority during that period of time. That expires for the first interim report. The first interim report is as of October 31. It is submitted to the county mid-December. That report, we school services are saying, "You need to budget for that cut. Budget for the triggered cut." Your county is saying that. Need to budget for the triggered cut. If a district budgets for the triggered cut and can't maintain its solvency for the current year plus two, then the county would have an opportunity to step in at that point.
Sorry, just to be absolutely clear, because there's been some lack of clarity locally. You're saying at the first interim report that we have to approve by December 15, which is through our October 31, we have to budget as if the trigger is pulled?
Our recommendation is that you do that. I believe your county will require you to do that. So when you do your first interim report, typically you would vote on that, the first meeting in December, and you would self-certify and say, "We're positive," meaning we have no problems getting through the current year plus two, or "qualified," meaning we may have some problems, or "negative," meaning we're not going to make it. And so at that time, we would say that you need to budget for that. Now, notice that the dates are real close. So if in November, the legislative analyst office says the $4 billion is going to be there, there won't be a triggered cut. And then we would reverse our position, and so would the county. But for now, as you're preparing that, since you're doing it now toward the end of October and into November, we're saying you should at least budget for it at that level. And if it disappears, it does. But if it doesn't, and that trigger gets pulled, you're going to want to account for it.
And if we budget for it at the level of the mid-year cuts, which would be the $4,953 revenue limit, we would then assume that $4,953 into the '12, '13, and '13, '14 years?
Not quite. That would be a judicious and conservative policy. But the state's current law is this cut gets made once, and then the revenue limit goes back up again. So you would take the cut in December, then the following year, you would get the $5,213 that you're getting this year. Okay?
Yes.
Okay?
One question here. And just to make sure in terms of the public being aware of this, we approve our budget in June, but we're required on December 15 to say how we're going to balance the budget in June, plus the years beyond. And then in March 15, we're once again required to show how we're going to do that. And each time, at least since I've been on the board the last three years, every time we have, there are three possibilities, which was positive certification, qualified certification, and negative certification. Correct. And each time, we have gotten a positive certification, because we found a way with horrible cuts to balance for the following year with projected cuts for the following years. There are 1,000 districts in California, and up to this point, before this crisis year, how often have districts turned in either qualified or negative reports?
Another great question. Before 2007/8, we would have about 30 districts a year that would have either qualified or negative reports, about 30 out of 1,000. In 2008/9 and '09/10, we had almost 300. For last year, we had 175 that were qualified or negative.
So that's, just out of the 1,000 districts, that's how many districts have already done more poorly than we have during this time in terms of being able to balance the budget?
Right. There were 175 districts at the second interim that said, "We can't make it through the current year plus two without more revenues or more cuts or something." So there were 175 that gave a certification that was lower than yours.
And I know we didn't want you to look into crystal ball, but I'm imagining that number is going to be much higher for the next couple of reports.
Every time we get a cut, that number goes up. And then the fiscal advisors come in, the fiscal experts, the boards go back and review cuts, they go back to the bargaining table, and they try to fix it. And so the number initially goes up, and then starts to work its way back down again. And hopefully, if the state doesn't deliver another blow, then it continues to go lower. But over these past four years, every time it's come down, something else has happened from the state to push it back up.
So it sounds like with so many districts having difficulty, we're going to have a shortage of fiscal advisors.
Well, we may have a shortage of fiscal advisors, but then again, you know, with the county offices providing that oversight, they are serving in that role for a lot of districts.
Okay.
Okay. So the goal of the county office is to help you to get through this. The lowest level of intervention is a fiscal expert. They have no power over you, the board. Okay. Now, the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team plays a role. And the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team came in being in 1991 when the Richmond School District got a loan, and the state of California said, "We don't want to make loans. We want somebody to be out there protecting us and doing intervention early." That's the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team. That's their basic role. You can call them in. The county can call them in. The state superintendent of the legislature can call them in in a bad situation. Now, if the second-largest district in the state is in serious solvency problems, you're going to see them up close and personal. On the day that the CEO of the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team is Dr. Joel Montero. And he says you can tell when a board is having a bad day, because they see Ron Bennett, Fick Matt, and the 60 Minutes truck pulling up in front of the district for the board meeting, right? And that normally means you're not going to have a great day. But they can help you in trying to go through these problems, resolve some disputes. But the second blue bullet is the big one. They advise the legislature directly on the need for a state loan. So you would see Joel Montero standing here, saying, "Okay, I've analyzed everything, and I think you need a loan. And I think it needs to be this much." And so Fick Matt has that responsibility.
Just on timing again, this gets to the timing issue. At the first interim, if we have to count the trigger cuts, and we therefore, at least I think we all believe, that we probably cannot produce to balance budget if the triggers go in without drastic changes, then is that when that first trigger of this team would come in? I mean, under that scenario?
So you would like to think that it would be an orderly process, that you would go positive, qualified, negative. Then the process would start for the insolvency, right? Of all of the districts that have gotten state loans, all but one were self-certified positive right before they got the loan.
Ah.
Okay? And so there's always some hope and some disbelief that happens right before the darkest hour.
That's because banks never give you money when you need it, only when you don't need it.
That's right. You can get a loan when you don't need it. And so if you get into serious financial solvency problems, you will see the Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team here. They will size the loan. They'll likely bring in a member of my staff to help them do that, but then they'll say to the board, "You need a loan of this size." Okay. So a fiscal advisor is normally, a fiscal expert is assigned if you're qualified. A fiscal advisor will always be assigned if you go negative. The fiscal advisor now is one level higher in supervision and intervention. The fiscal advisor can set aside the decisions of the board. So when I've served as a fiscal advisor, if a board decided to, let's say you decided to bring those 300 teachers back, I'll just use that because it's a real example, your fiscal advisor could say, "Stay and rescind that order. We are not going to do that." And that would take precedence over the board's vote. So a fiscal advisor starts to put teeth into the process.
My question is this. I guess I'm just, you know, I think we're all kind of frustrated. The state pushes us to the brink. The state does. And then the state wants to turn around and have us apply to them for a loan and install a fiscal advisor. Why don't they use the fiscal advisor first? Why don't the state use... I mean, I don't understand why they take us through all these steps. They're not being very proactive. It's like they take us to the brink, and then all of a sudden, they say, "Well, let me call in, let me give you a fiscal advisor." And I'm not understanding why these people that they want to send to these districts are not advising them on the state level right now. Because if what we see happening, I mean, it's very clear this is what's happening. And I'm not understanding, and maybe, I just don't want to accept it, that our legislator and our governor see this, and they're not doing anything about it, and allowing a lot of school districts go under. And that costs us more. Hold on, you know, but my concern is that that costs us more in the long run. These are children's lives that we're playing with? And they're willing to sacrifice that and then turn around and say, "Well, district, since we lowered your amount per student down to less than 5,000 per student, we're going to now tell you that you don't know how to spend your money?"
So let me address that. Over the past 20 years, the state's made about a dozen loans. Only one of those loans has been during this recession. And that loan goes back to something that the district itself did about eight years ago that caused it to get a loan. And so the state believes, and I think the evidence would show, that most of the loans have been self-inflicted wounds from the districts themselves. So Oakland gave a 24% pay raise. They didn't have the money. They end up with a $100 million loan. Okay? That kind of thing. So the premise in Sacramento, old premise, has been the districts are outliers that get the loans, a dozen loans in 20 years, right? And most of them, you can trace the cause to the board. What we have now is, and I had that on a slide, today, that's not what we have. These districts are being brought to the brink by the state. And that's why I said it's ironic that now the state could be in a position of cutting you $50 million, putting you over the brink, and giving you a $100 million loan, or some number like that, right?
Right.
And so somewhere along the way, if a lot of districts go over the brink, then that's what will happen. But, you know, sometimes, local boards, well, all the time, local boards do everything they can to protect the programs for as long as they can and to protect local control. And so we haven't had that many loans. The boards have made the cuts. The employee organizations have made the sacrifices and taken the reductions. And so we've balanced those budgets. And when we, each year, say we're going to go broke, and then we go back and find a way to make it through one more year. We get a little bit of federal money. That helps. We find a way just to make it through one more year, and that's what districts have done. There's only so long that you can do that, and many districts right now are telling me that they're where you think you are, that the next cut may be the one that breaks the camel's back. But, you know, we never say that with certainty, because we said that last year, and then the jobs money came in after the feds said there would be no more money. Now, we have, 2012, a federal election, and let's see, is the president up for reelection? I guess he is. So could there be, in a slow economy, more jobs money in an election year? So we never say, "We're not going to get any more money." We say that we have no notice that we are entitled to any more money right now. And if we get it, we'd love to have it, and we will use it wisely. But your point is a good one, because the game has changed. It is no longer, in my view, districts individually getting themselves into trouble. It is the state of California putting them at the brink, where the next false step takes them across the edge.
And Mr. Bennett, just to build on Ms. Jackson's question, let's say San Diego Unified's in a position that we need a $100 million loan. And then LA Unified needs a $500 million loan, and seven or eight other large districts. And so now we're talking about $1 billion. Where's the state going to get that money to provide these loans?
So I'm going to answer the question now. I've got it on a slide. But the state is going to require you to borrow it at market rates and you to pay it back. And interest rates are low, very low right now, unless you need the money. If you need the money and you're a high-risk loan, like the state of California is paying very high interest, you're going to pay high interest. And I'll give you an example in a minute.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm sorry, but this one point of the timing, and you said here that if a fiscal advisor is brought in, you said if a greater level of intervention is needed. Let's continue the fact that we're at the mid-year, we've passed an interim, a first interim budget with the cuts in it, because that's what you're saying to do, and then we get to the point where, if there really are cuts, and we just say that it's just not physically able to do it without a loan. You said the fiscal advisor can rescind and stay actions of the board. Can the fiscal advisor implement actions?
No. So the fiscal advisor, that's a fine touch on that question. If there's an item on the agenda, and the board votes yes, the fiscal advisor can stay and rescind the vote. So for a pay raise or reinstating layoffs or whatever. But the fiscal advisor cannot make a positive vote. So if it's on the agenda, the board votes no, fiscal advisor can't say, "Well, we're going to make that one a yes." They can only stay and rescind the actions that the board takes.
So it could not force, at that point in the process, a fiscal advisor could not implement cuts that the board, say, for instance, did not support in the process?
Right. So for example, where you see it most often, fiscal advisor comes in after the January budget and says to the board, "You need to issue 400 layoff notices." And the board says, "Stuff it. We're not going to do that." Fiscal advisor can't make you issue the layoff notices. Now you get past the 15th of March, there are no layoff notices out there. So the only thing, so there aren't going to be any layoffs. So the only thing the fiscal advisor can do, then, is prevent you from spending money in any other area. And so when you vote to do step-in column, we'll stay and rescind that. We're not going to do that. When you vote to buy buses, we're not going to buy buses. When you vote for the next employee association contract, if it has any costs in it, we'll stay and rescind that contract. So where you normally see it, the affirmative vote, is where the board, where the fiscal advisor wants you to issue layoff notices and the board doesn't want to...
Can a fiscal advisor, we have on a monthly basis dozens, if not hundreds, of contracts, private vendor contracts we approve. And can he stay those?
Yes. Fiscal advisor, when I'm the fiscal advisor, and I've been one, I can go through, I would go through, every item that comes to the board, including the consent agenda. And then I would ask the board president to pull for a separate vote, all of these items. And then when the vote came up, I would let the board vote yes and then stay and rescind the vote. Now, the fiscal advisor has that authority. Most of them work hard not to use it, because the board normally is trying to do the right thing. And if the fiscal advisor explains they don't have the money in the bank to pay the bill, the board doesn't want to vote to create the bill either. But times really have changed, and I appreciate Ms. Jackson's question, because we haven't had any loans because of the fiscal crisis. And the first district that comes forward with one is going to be at the pointy end of a spear-catching contest with the state, and you're going to be the accused, because that's what's been done in the past, right? And they're going to say, "What did you do out there?" Now, when there are 100, then the state will recognize, maybe that it caused it. But it isn't likely the state's going to take responsibility for it, anything short of that.
And I'm sorry to belabor this point, but I'm still not clear, when is a fiscal, if we pass the first interim, and it's clear, and the cuts are in place after January, and it's clear we're in trouble, is that the point where the fiscal advisor probably realistically comes in?
Yes. So if your fiscal, if your first interim is less than positive, the county is required by law to take some action. And that action will include either a fiscal expert or a fiscal advisor. And that action will include either a fiscal expert or a fiscal advisor, depending on the scope of the problem.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. So now we move on to a trustee. So now the level of intensity is getting higher. A trustee is appointed by the state superintendent, not the county office. A trustee is appointed if you get a loan of any size. A loan of any size, you get a trustee. The trustee is more permanent than the fiscal advisor. The trustee is paid by the district, by the way, although the person is appointed by the state.
We don't have any money.
And so you don't think the state's going to accept responsibility for this, do you? And so the state appoints the person. That person will be at every board meeting, have the stay and rescind authority. How long will they have that stay and rescind authority? Until the loan is paid off. So we've had some districts that have gotten small loans, paid them off in three or four years. They were relatively minor loans compared to the size of the district. And that's what happens. We haven't really had many of these, though. Typically, what happens is the loan is bigger. And if it's 200% of your required reserve, isn't much. So that'd be either a 2% or a 4%, depending on, you know, that dispute about whether you're a 1% or a 2% district. But if you needed more than 2% or 4%, then you'd be above this level. Okay? So now we're going to go to the next level. And the next level is that you get a bigger loan. So if you get a bigger loan, like in Oakland, Oakland with a $500 million budget got a $100 million loan. Vallejo with a $120 million budget got a $60 million loan. And if you get a loan like that, the first thing that state law requires is that the superintendent is dismissed. The second thing that happens is the entire board loses all of their powers, their benefits, anything from the, anything from board standing, and they become advisory. They become advisory. The state superintendent appoints a state administrator who has all the powers of the board, all the powers of the superintendent. That person runs the district. And they typically do that for three or four years. Now, this is the most severe form of state intervention, and you'll hear why in just a minute. But not only do you lose your powers, you lose your superintendent, you lose local control for at least four or five years. And then when you can stabilize your budget, including paying back the loan, so you've got to make the payments on the loan as well. And so you already had a budget problem. You've already, you've still got to make the cuts to balance the budget. But now you've got the cost of this loan, the cost of the state administrator, all of that that you have to pay for. When you balance the budget with that in it, the board typically gets their powers back and they're allowed to hire a superintendent. And the state administrator loses that title and it becomes state trustee. How long does that last? Typically, 20 to 25 years. You have that person here at every meeting, superimposing his or her view of your finances over your priorities. And they have that stay and rescind authority for that whole 20 or 25 years. It's the period of the loan. So this is really severe intervention. You basically lose control for a long time. So how does the process work? And I'm going to give you a little bit of a timeline. So the county office and FICMAT agree that you are insolvent and you need a loan. FICMAT sizes the loan. This process takes usually three or four months. You have to go to one of your local legislators and say, "I'd like you to carry a bill to give us a loan." And they actually carry a special bill through the California Legislature that says, "We want to give San Diego Unified a loan in this amount." And then it goes through every committee. And as it goes through the committees, the superintendent and the board come up and testify as to why their district needs a loan. And again, you will be treated like the accused. Eventually, if it's apparent that you're going to go insolvent, state can't allow you to do that, they will make the loan. The bill itself will dictate the terms of the loan. You will repay the principal, a market interest rate, and all costs. The emergency loan is designed, it's like an amount that you can draw from to cover your needs while you make the cuts. So Oakland was deficit spending at the rate of $40 million a year, had a $30 million negative balance, so they're 70 down, so the loan was 100 to get them through at least one more year before they would have to get the budget in balance. Okay? All right. So here, this is my last slide.
Just ask one question before we go on to that, which is, as far as the county oversight and then the state trustee, you mentioned that the state superintendent of public instruction at that point appoints the state trustee, right? What power or influence does the state superintendent of public instruction have over the county administrators? Because, you know, from my understanding, there's a lot of variability across the state of how different counties enforce different things and interpret and so forth. And does the state superintendent have any oversight or any power to influence that?
So there are two answers to that question. First, the state superintendent oversees the fiscal management of the county itself the same way the county oversees a district. So they have the responsibility. And the county declares itself to be positive, qualified, or negative. And we've had some that have been less than positive. And the state superintendent works with them on their own budget. So they have that oversight. On the linkage between the state superintendent and actions for your district, the state superintendent is not in that linkage. The county superintendent, the county board, they are given the responsibilities directly in the law, and they exercise that themselves, not under the auspices of the state superintendent. Now, as this process goes along and it becomes apparent that you're going to need a loan, there will be lots of people here to help you. They will be here to help you to figure this out, right? And they will be from the county, they will be from the state, they'll be from FICMAT, and you may hear from a local legislator or two. Okay? Okay. So since 1991, I said there had only been a handful of loans. These are the loans. And I put the slide in, this is a FICMAT slide. We work closely with them and they use our stuff, we use theirs. But the King City loan is one I'd like to talk about. I said I'd give you an example. This is a district that has a budget, a high school district up in the Central Valley. It has a budget of $17 million. A $13 million loan is arguably the biggest loan the state's given as a percentage of budget, right? The cost of servicing that loan is 15% of their ongoing budget. So you have a district that couldn't balance its $17 million budget. And now 15% comes out to service the loan. And then the district still has to balance that budget in some way. So that, right now, they have a state administrator. The board's powers are set aside. They don't have a superintendent. State administrator's running the district. But that's a pretty tough task, right? If you can't balance the budget at 17, how are you going to balance it at 14? Right? And that's really what they're trying to do. And some of these districts, because of the cuts from the state, the answer is that district will be able to balance its budget when the state eliminates the deficit and gives them the 20% back. That's when they'll be able to balance their budget. And so I have to say that what California has done to public education is an absolute disgrace. And it's affecting your district, it's affecting every student, it's affecting every school, it's affecting every employee, it's affecting every member of the community, it's affecting property owners who are trying to build the community. And where does the buck stop? At the local level. I used to say that the state of California did not believe in local control by school boards. And I could show a body of law that would say that. Today, I believe they absolutely believe in local control. They think you should make these cuts because they're sure not going to. So when you look at the number of loans, there haven't been very many. And it's because districts like yours have done a good job of keeping the district on the right side of that brink, year to year, over and over. And no two districts have done it the same way. They've all found solutions that work for them. Most of the solutions have been unpopular with somebody, usually with every board member to start with. But they have to be done. And so I commend you for the actions that you've taken. I know you have a tough job. I know that you're not getting a lot of help. I know I didn't present a lot of good news. I would have liked to have been able to play the violin. I wasn't born with that gene. And I'm glad that the children were here to at least remind us why we're all here.
Mr. Bennett, first of all, I really want to thank you for your presentation. But my question is more of a proactive question toward the state right now. Because I see that they're pushing all this on local and saying it's local control, but they hold up purse strings. And this is like a corporate takeover of public education. And that is very disconcerting to me at this particular point. What do we do? I mean, we've done a lot. I mean, we've challenged, we've pushed our legislators and they've been very helpful. But I'm not sure what is it we can ask them to do at this particular point. So if there was something that could be done, what would you recommend? I mean, I'm kind of radical. My thing is that if the state won't pay us to educate our children properly, can we just close all of our schools and tell the state that, you know, until you're ready to do the right thing, then, you know, we'll come back to the table? But I think that we have to be willing to, we have to do something because I don't believe it's appropriate for our district or any other district that to turn around. I mean, times are different, very different. But if you look at this graph right here that you gave us, if the state has done this to us, and now the state is asking us to take out a loan to make our bills, and they were the ones who put us in this situation, we have to have some recourse. We, I mean, I think that we're trying this with the state right now, but we have to have some other recourse because our parents are sitting here tonight because they want some action. And we want to help them, but we really don't know the right solutions right now to go back to the state with. So could you give me some ideas of what you might would? If you could, what would you recommend?
Well, first of all, the voices of locally-elected officials are always heard more loudly than anybody else when you come to Sacramento. So communicating with your legislators all of the time is really important. Second thing is that the California School Boards Association does an excellent job of representing the technical parts of some of these issues. But more than that, they and the California Teachers Association are very expert in suing the state. And it's disappointing, but most of the justice that we've had in public education in California has come from lawsuits. And California Teachers Association and California School Boards Association joining together to force the state to obey the law and do the right thing. Unfortunately, that takes a while. So I would encourage you to engage in both of those areas. Another thing is that I believe that there will be an initiative. Why do we have so many initiatives? We have initiatives when the voters believe that the legislature is not dealing with the problems that they want dealt with. And I believe that there will be another initiative. Prop 98 was an initiative. Prop 98 is a dismal failure. Prop 98 was designed to produce lowest, among the lowest class sizes in the nation. That was one of its goals. We have the highest. It was designed to provide the highest student funding per student in the nation. We're 46th. It was designed to make sure that we kept up with the share of the state budget as it grew. Over 10 good years, 98 to 2008, state budget, their spending went up 64%. Education went up 41. Over the next three bad years, education goes down 20% and nobody else loses anything. So Prop 98 is a dismal failure. So I believe that there will be an initiative process, and I hope there will be competing proposals for revamping not only California school finance, but California state finance. And you're a big, important district. And when you weigh in on these issues, you bring a lot of votes with you. And if your local paper starts to say, "This is a good idea for our district," you influence a lot of legislators who have to run in this area. And so sometimes that's what it gets down to for state changes. And the initiative process is a hard process, but that's how change has occurred. So, you know, it's easy to feel like you're out here and you're helpless, but you're not helpless. You have a big budget. You have a lot of good people. You have a lot of involved parents. You have a committed board and staff. If you think about problems the way I do, I don't think about what I don't have, I think about what I do have. And I try to get the most mileage out of that for the students that you have today. So other questions, please? I don't mean to sound like I'm lecturing or pontificating. I'm trying to get the message across in a way where I give you something you can work with.
Mr. Bennett, thank you so much for being here. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
You know, until Mr. Bennett's presentation, Ron Little was the most depressing person to ever appear before the board, so it is a distinction.
Well, we're going to actually make a couple of changes in the agenda and bring Ron back up as the Mr. Sunshine tonight. Yeah, Ron Little coming up. So we're moving straight to items I-1 through I-3 right now.
Thank you. Yeah. Let me get comfortable here. So what I learned is if you want a job with stability, you become a state trustee, right? I just wanted to add one thing to Mr. Bennett's presentation and put some of those numbers in context. So the alligator chart, which I thought was great, shows he distinguished between money that we used to have and no longer have, and money that we should have but don't have. So just, and this is on a per annum, annual basis. So the money that we used to have that don't, that we have no longer because of the deficit would be an additional $61 million each year to this district. And the money that we should have with the cost of living adjustments that we don't have is over $140 million each year to this district. So that's a huge opportunity cost, a lot of programs and a lot of teachers. I thought with the board's permission, we might do the parallel tracks presentation first, since that kind of piggybacks from Mr. Bennett's presentation. So in this presentation, we're going to update the board on the progress of our four work teams and their efforts to propose recommendations around the critical budget issues, most of which Mr. Bennett just discussed confronting the district this year and next year. So we'll wait for this to come up. And you'll see, as we put up the first slide, we have a bullet train on the front slide. And I think that's an apropos image because all these teams are working with alacrity and expediently to achieve their charge, which is to meet their recommendations within the tight deadlines that we have in front of us. Okay? Thank you. All right. So we formed four diverse work teams with representatives from academics, business, IT, and the superintendent's office, as well as finance. Track one, as you'll note, is working on looking at current year resource allocations. Track two is considering potential solutions to mid-year reductions if they should come to pass. Track three is looking at making improvements to our X-factor model for schools' budgeting. And track four is considering recommendations for 2012, 2013, potential solutions to the budget shortfall. Oh, you're doing it. Thank you. Okay. This is just a reminder with respect to the budget gap. So we've heard a lot of numbers tonight, and there's a lot of variables still that we're waiting to learn from the state. But certainly, we know with certainty that we're looking at at least a $60 million problem for 2012, 2013. If there's no COLA next year, that could quickly jump up to $75, $80 million. That's the certain column there. The probable, and these are all just based on fiscal variables, the probable range based on mid-year reductions happening, based on a COLA not coming to fruition next year is somewhere in the vicinity of $106 to $116 million. And the possible range, which is less probable but also possible, which includes some other factors, staff grievances, excess teacher assumptions, et cetera, takes us all the way up to about $118 million. So we're looking at a range from potential solutions or potential budget shortfall for 2012, 2013 of $60 million to $118 million on the outside. Next slide, please. So turning back to the parallel tracks. So track one, the work of this team was meant to address the questions, how do we currently apply our resources? And as you know, we've been sharing with you current year fiscal information. The division heads and the department heads have been doing a great job telling their respective stories. They took the lead from Deputy Superintendent Stover and really have presented quite compelling narratives about how they're getting by with this year. narratives about how they're getting by with this year's resources. So while finance provided them the data, the division heads and the department heads must be commended for their succinct and informative presentations. So the team was mostly financed, and of course, the whole team across the district of all the division and department head leaders. Next slide, please. We've seen most of these presentations to date. Next week, we will wind up with the other funds and the charter schools. And again, the purpose of this was to inform future decisions around potential reductions and where we might look when we have to, unfortunately. Next slide, please. Track 2 is looking at potential mid-year solutions to mitigate the potential mid-year cuts that Mr. Bennett talked about. You know, that 4% revenue limit is worth about $28 million to the district, $29 million. The transportation reduction is worth another $1.5 million. That gets us to $30 million. So this team is really looking at what can we do this current fiscal year to help mitigate that $30 million loss. We know that we can't do the whole 30. We know that we can't even probably do half of that 30. But what could we realistically do this year? And Mr. Stover is chairing that committee as our payroll director. Sue Weir, and we have a couple area supes on that committee. So we'll bring back some recommendations fairly quickly. Next slide, please. You can see that this is the work that committee's been doing. We're looking at various options that we've used in the past, you know, spending freezes, hiring freezes. We're also looking at how we expend hourly expenses. So our overtime budget, our additional time budget, what kind of changes can we make in the current year to help reduce some of those expenditures? We're looking at the cash flow projections, and then, as we said, we're going to bring back recommendations to the board within the next, actually, within the next three weeks. Next slide, please. This is just a reminder that currently, these are the solutions that we've been chatting about. These are not the recommendations of this team. These are simply what's been shared publicly. So we know that we've sold some property. We know that we could reduce our confidence level in our self-insurance funds. We are looking at classified personnel reductions for half the year. Right now, that's about eight and a half to $9 million. If we were to look at some of the other options, like vacancies and hiring freezes and spending freezes, perhaps we could stretch that to $12 million on the outside. But again, we'll bring back further recommendations with specifics in the near term. Track 3, and the first train to leave the station on track was this track, which is the X Factor Review. And this team is quite comprehensive, quite skilled. I've sat in on a few of their meetings, and they're making excellent progress. The progress on the next slide, please, is delineated here. Again, they're really taking a hard look at what worked well in the X Factor this year, what didn't. They're reaching out to their colleagues. As you noted on the previous slide, we have a lot of educational leaders and educators on the committee. So they're reaching out to their colleagues, principals, vice principals, teachers, to see what we could improve upon, and...
Mr. Little, could you just explain to the public what the X Factor is?
Sure.
It's not the TV show.
I'm sorry. The X Factor was a budgeting model we employed to develop this year's budget for the first time at the site level. And primarily, it was the X stands for the discretionary pot of money that the sites had to work with, that they could budget with and allocate as they locally chose to do so. To get to that X, which is an excellent point, we'll come back to this point later in the slideshow, to get to that value of X, we have to back out all the teacher allocations. So we subtract that from the total available resources. Then we subtract all the principals at every school. And then we subtract all the central office support staff, the police and the nurses, and all of the finance and the IT, and all of us that support the schools here. And then we subtract out some fixed costs, like utilities. And what's left generally is the X. This past year, it was worth about $74 million. And a committee last year created a formula to distribute that $74 million to the schools on a per pupil allocation so that they could, you know, purchase some staff, purchase some programming, et cetera, spend it as they chose, ideally, and most often in collaboration with their school services, I'm sorry, their school communities. And that's what we implemented for the first time this past year. So what this group, again, is looking at is how can we improve that model? And, you know, there were some challenges with how we distributed the X and the formulas that we created, and we knew that going into it. And they're working at smoothing those challenges and hopefully come back with some recommendations. Next slide, please. It's a very collaborative and transparent process. They've done a lot of work. I've seen a few, again, of the scenarios. We're hoping they're going to bring their proposals forward to cabinet by the middle of November, late November at the latest, and we'll be back to the board in early December with a model and a proposal and hopefully for approval. Okay. The last final team is forward-looking, as we mentioned. It's charged with identifying potential solutions for next year's budget gap, which, again, we just saw is anywhere from $60 million to over $115 million. This team, again, is chaired by our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Salazar, and then we have our controller, Ms. Salkeld, also chairing it. You can see there's some superintendent staff on there, as well as academics and the other teams that we talked about. Next slide, please. This is some of the work they've done. I think they have two meetings under their belt. They're just sort of getting started. They're going to explore the revenue side as well as the expense side of the equation. Their due date is more like early January 2012. We have to submit with our second interim report a detailed list of reductions for 2012, 2013 to the county. It is true, as we heard in the last presentation, that we also have, we have to have a list for first interim. That can be a little bit more general and a little bit more conceptual. But certainly, by second interim, which ends January 31st, we'll need to nail those down and submit those to the governor, I'm sorry, to the county. Of course, by January, we'll also know more about the governor's proposal, as well as where we stand with triggers. So there'll be a lot happening, obviously, at one time. Next slide, please. Again, this is not the team's recommendations for solutions. This is just what we've shared publicly to date. So we've seen these solutions that we've chatted about with respect to closing that $60 million to $115 million gap. We have separated them traditionally at this point, if I can use that word, non-negotiated solutions and those that require negotiations. I won't go through all of these, but you can see the only one that's on there that's one time in nature is the sale of district surplus properties. So, you know, that will help in the short term, but it won't give us the best bang for our buck moving forward. So that's going to be a conversation we'll want to have in the near future. Finally, I'd just like to share that from the staff's perspective, and as Superintendent Koba's been saying for some time in Ron Bennett's presentation reiterated, we're going to need some key decisions within the next 60 days. And the primary reason from the fiscal perspective is exactly what Mr. Evans alluded to earlier, is that we need to get to a value of X. We need to get to an X that we can share with the schools and distribute to the schools by mid-January at the latest, so they can begin their budgeting work in mid-January, you know, the end of January at the latest. Actually, they have to start early January would be great. Mid-January is probably the latest they could start. We tried to, as a team, identify some of the decisions that we see as affecting and impacting the X Factor discussion. So many of them, obviously, are on the agendas for the next few meetings.
Well, just in terms of that, the school budgeting process, I think what we've done the past couple of years is we've tried to, we've gotten the governor's proposal in early January. We've tried to take a little, you know, a week or so to analyze what that means for us and then factor that into the, so are we anticipating?
That's exactly how this timeline fits into that, exactly. So we would wait until the governor's proposal. We would obviously develop a few different scenarios, and, you know, as soon as the governor gave us his best thinking, we would know which of the scenarios to go with. So we would be able to move fairly quickly, like you said, you know, five days on the outside. So transportation reductions obviously involve enrollment projections. Enrollment projections are key, obviously, to how we allocate to schools. Counselors and nurses, again, these were pulled out of the centralized services last year and put into the X Factor. If that's a model we want to change, again, that decision needs to happen sooner than later. How will our centralized support services change, if at all, in the short term? So again, now we're talking classified reductions in the near term. Even though we won't know about mid-year reductions until mid-December at the earliest, early January at the latest, it's prudent to take the steps that we need to take and put them into place to maximize and leverage, you know, five to six months' worth of savings if we need to get them. We'll need to make some decisions around K through three class sizes. You know, I think when we, when the board voted to restore K through three class sizes, my understanding it was a one-year commitment. We have to go back and revisit that, whether that's going to move forward or not. But again, that impacts the X Factor because those teachers, if they're not in the allocation model, will go into the X, they're one place or the other. Title I phasing plan, of course, schools need to know sooner than later. School closures, again, affect enrollment projections, as well as discretionary funds, and on and on. We talked about the first interim contingency. All that, again, is just to get to where we need to get to develop the X Factor model, as well as to do some meaningful multi-year projections that we need to include in our first interim budget. So although we don't need to give the county a detailed plan of mid-year cuts or for mid-year cuts or for next year's budget gap, we do need to have accurate multi-year projections at that point. So that's where we're heading with these four budget tracks and these four teams. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, just very briefly, because I know we've got to get on to other things tonight. I'm looking at the X Factor enhancements that they are recommending.
Yes, yes.
And I'm just trying to move ahead a little bit. And I hope that they'll look at this a little bit more. The first bullet says that all schools that have experienced growth with 25 or more students should receive additional X Factor funding. Then the second bullet says student, with student schools with enrollment decline should not be penalized by losing any funding. So...
Just to check, I think that's item I.
Yeah, we were going to move into that report next.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to move ahead to there because I know we've got a lot of people waiting. And since he's doing the X Factor, I just wanted to, because I think that we're not supposed to take action on this tonight. We're supposed to information item, correct?
Well, I-3 is an information item.
I-2?
I-2 is an action item.
And so that's, I mean, it's a problem because you can't, in this economic climate, we can't say to the schools that are losing money, "We're not going to cut your funding." And then to the schools that are gaining students, we're going to find, you can't take $10 and give it and keep it and give it away.
Okay. I just want to, just so we're, so we can all be on the same page. Why don't we complete any questions on I-3, and then we'll move to I-2.
Okay. I have one general statement and question. Basically, we're looking at a best-case scenario for next year of $60 million of cuts and on up from there, depending on various factors. And then we've also talked, and we've talked about the potential of mid-year cuts. But I just want to be really clear. A lot of the cuts that we've been talking about, the really painful cuts we're talking about, whether it's salary concessions, whether it's class size, school closure, selling property and so forth, those are really designed to meet the $60 million shortfall for next year. And because the, if, I don't want people to think that at some point, if the mid-year cuts do not go through, that we don't have severe, extreme cuts coming. To me, the difference is if the mid-year cuts go through, it's basically Armageddon at that point. It's questionable about us being able to continue operating and staying, escaping, being under state control and so forth. So the good news, if the mid-year cuts don't happen, would be that we are not facing imminent insolvency and state takeover, but we still have extremely painful cuts to make to maintain our local control. Is that...
Absolutely, yeah. The $60 million gap was with no mid-year cuts. And so that's the minimum. I mean, maybe the best case is a bad, is a misnomer. I mean, the minimum we need to make for next year will be $60 million, and that's if we have no mid-year cuts. If we have mid-year cuts, they'll be much worse.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Just want to clarify one. The K to three class size reduction, in our assumption of a $60 million problem, is factored into the 1213 budget. So we're assuming that we would continue with K to three reduction. Now, if we face a $60 million option, then it becomes, you know, the question is how are we going to sustain it? But the, but right now, we are factoring K to three class size.
That's correct. It's in the budget currently. That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from Mr. Little? No. Okay, thank you. Well, why don't we go straight to I-2, then, the X Factor.
Thank you.
We're going to talk to I-1 or...
Yeah, I want to get, obviously, to the school closure issue as quick as we can. So why don't we do I-2, and then we'll...
Sure. Sure. So we'll make this very brief. Enrollment shifts have resulted in about 574 students net being moved throughout the district. We, we're going to have to adjust our X Factor allocations based on enrollment shifts. So we formed a work team, again, with Deputy Superintendent Meyer and Assistant Superintendent Salazar, a few, I think, four area superintendents and a few finance team members. We reviewed where we were in terms of projections for enrollment for this year because that's how the X Factor was allocated originally. And then we looked at Third Friday numbers because that's how we allocated the teachers this year. And we've provided you the data. And then the group, the work group, met to discuss how we would make adjustments to the X Factor, given the shifts in enrollment. And we discussed at least six or eight different models. And in half the models, we considered giving more to those schools that had increased enrollment and taking from those schools that lost enrollment. However, even as we were taking, I think we started with the baseline that we would, for every two students a school lost, we would only take one student's worth of X Factor. So we're trying to be somewhat sensitive to the schools that were losing enrollment at the beginning. And that was a conscious decision made by the group. I think the group felt that the difficulties that the schools had this year with balancing their budget, the fact that there was not a lot of money left in discretionary funding in terms of instructional supplies at the site level, they spent most of their X Factor in staff. There wasn't a lot there to take from. So that's a long way of saying that the team came to a consensus around, let's look at, instead of giving a full X allocation, let's just provide some additional funds to offset the cost of instructional materials and classroom supplies for those schools that picked up some students. There was some discussion about what the threshold should be, and the group agreed that 25 students was about the size of a classroom, and that seemed like a reasonable point to draw the line. And so the recommendations are in front of you there. The team's recommending that those 29 schools that grew by 25 or more students receive $75 more per student. That means that the range of extra X Factor money will be at the low end, $1,875, to the high end, I think MAN grew by over 190 students. They'll receive about $11,000 more. So at the school level, it's minimal. It will help with instructional supplies. The total cost to the general fund would be $103,875. We don't have these funds set aside, obviously. That would just come from the ending balance. And the group also really felt that as the X Factor team is doing its work, and we talk about next year, we should also give consideration to how we might deal with this issue next year of shifting enrollment. So this is the, this is the team's proposal, and obviously, we're recommending that the board would approve us to make those adjustments to the X Factor without penalizing those schools that lost students this year.
Okay. So can we get a motion to accept the staff's recommendation, and then we'll have discussion?
So moved.
Okay. Motion is second, and comment, Ms. Jackson.
Okay. So, thank you, because I think I'm a little bit better now, okay? And when I say that, I'm looking at the team that you have here for the X Factor that is working on Track 3, but then you have a different team that's looking at these enhancements.
That's true.
Okay. Okay, and I, that, that would be concerning because I would think that the people who are looking at the problems that we had last year would make sure that they're giving the other people some feedback. And if they're working in two different silos, I don't think that's good for our district, okay?
Yeah, if I could...
I mean, if you're saying that this is one team over here and one team over here, then I have a problem with that because this team over here, what you just said in the previous presentation, was they're the ones that are looking at determining what worked and what didn't. But over here, we have another group of people that are working, and they're saying, we want to direct, we want to approve this now. And I'm not sure that if all this information is being given to these people.
If I could share, yeah. So that's a good point. This group that we're talking about now is working for adjustments for the current year. So this group, and I think it's fair to say, the principals felt a sense of urgency with respect to, you know, receiving the funds because they received the students by now. You're making a good point, and I think that, you know, this is, this is kind of cleanup after the fact.
Right.
So we'll share this information with the group that's working on the X factor model for next year and talk about lessons learned. And some of the people, I think, are on this, actually, there are some crossovers, but we'll certainly share the information.
Okay, then, then help me understand the first two bullets again. And I think you kind of touched on them, but I really want to hear them very clearly.
These two?
The first two bullets said that if a school experienced growth, they would get additional funds. And if a school declined, they would not be penalized. So are you saying that based upon all these things, that we're now going to have to find an additional $103,000?
Yes, so our, the team's recommendation is, we'll give those 29 schools, I believe it's a total of, let's see, I had the total number of students, we'll give them $75 per student, and that will result in $103,875 cost to the general fund.
I'm just, I, last, this is what I get kind of confused, and I'm sorry if I seem like I'm confused, I am. Last year, we balanced our budget, right, down to the last, almost dollar, a billion dollars down to the last dollar. So what I hear you saying now is somewhere in our general fund, we're going to find $103,000. And that, I don't understand where you can find, if we balanced our budget last year down to the last dollar, and now you want us to approve another $100,000, where is that money coming from?
We, currently, if you remember, when we, when we adopted this year's budget, we had, in the reserves, in the ending balance, we had $22 million set aside for economic uncertainty, and we had $25 million that we would apply to this year's current deficit that is undesignated. So this $104,000 would come from the ending balance, which would come from the undesignated reserve. So it's just $104,000 less we have to work with this year's deficit.
Wait, okay.
So the ending balance was not...
Yes, the ending balance.
Even though we balanced the budget, the ending balance was not zero, and that's where $100,000 is being taken from.
That's correct.
Now, earlier, you said the total amount of money that went to all of our local schools for the X factor was about, how much?
About $74 million.
Okay, so what we're saying is we, we sent out $74 million to the schools.
Correct.
And we are making a $100,000 adjustment to that 70-some million, which, if I could do math really fast in my head, is, you know, a tenth of a percent or something like that.
That's what we're proposing.
Of error.
Okay, so any further questions or comments? If not, please, Ms. Jackson.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, we haven't got to your balance sheet here yet.
No, that's item one, which he said he wanted to put off.
You're going to put, he's going to delay item one?
Well, the president said he wanted to.
Okay.
We can overlook, this is item two there.
I'm just saying it because I, I'm looking at the ending balance, and so I'm, and I, I'm only doing this because what happens is, we approve these things, and people say, oh, we had this extra money somewhere. And then you come back three months later and say, guess what? Now we have $5 million in the hole because you approved something that we didn't actually have the money for, okay? And we keep doing this time after time, and so it, it bothers me because, again, I, I almost noted, three months from today, December, the end of December, someone's going to say, guess what? We don't have enough money, and, yeah, that's because we allocated this money. And the question becomes for me, again, where is this, is this, if this is out of our reserve reserves, I can understand that because we did not budget that, okay? But please don't tell me that we had some part of money sitting over here that, because we didn't, we balanced the budget, I mean, we cut people, we laid people off last year because we didn't have money.
We did, yes.
Okay, so, so it concerns me when you say, all of a sudden, we found money, we have extra money someplace, because then people don't trust us.
Which is not what we said. That's not what I said. But I understand the point, and again, so this is not $104,000 that we have to expend. We will take it from our ending fund balance, and we'll have to find $104,000 somewhere else along the road as we move forward through this fiscal year.
Okay, now that's what we needed to hear.
All right. Any further questions or comments? If not, please vote on the motion. Okay, motion passes. Okay, let's move on to, we're going to go straight to items I seven and I eight now. So item I seven is a five-year transportation plan discussion that the staff will lead us to Superintendent Koba.
Yeah, back several months ago, the board requested of staff that we come back to you with options for reducing transportation to mandated levels, and we have prepared that. This is a, an item for potential action. We have four different recommendations for you that you can look at, and the two gentlemen will provide the report to you. And please, we're looking back at what has been this summer. We're looking at what is right now and what will be in the future under this elimination. So gentlemen, Gene Robinson, Drew Rollins are going to present to you now.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Koba, Deputy Superintendents. As Mr. Stover had said, we had talked in June and made some pretty dramatic cuts to transportation going into this year in the amount of about $7.75 million. If you look on this first slide, this shows the impact on students of what we, what those cuts amounted to. We are now transporting a little over 4,000 fewer students, excuse me, this year than we did last year. About 1,100 of those students are from the mandated area, about half and half between program improvement, and the other half of that, 1,100 from special education. The remainder of those cuts were about 3,000 students that fell primarily in the magnet and Veep area. Now we are, actions that we've taken, we are transporting all of the special education students which are mandated, the PI students, there's a few homeless students that we are transporting, and an ADA 504, which is Americans with Disability Act, which is, in essence, a temporary special education student where they, they need that transportation. We have gone through IEP reviews with special, working with special education, they reviewed all the IEPs, and through that review have determined a number of students that were receiving transportation who their IEP really did not call for the need for transportation. So that's where you see that approximately 600 students in special ed that we are not transporting this year, that we did transport last year. We also reduced, as I said, the number of Veep and Magnet students. We planned to limit that negative impact, and we're, did limit that negative impact to no more than 25% of the 2010-11 enrollment.
Gene, can I interrupt you just for a second? You, I want to make sure you all, you have a revised document in your brown folder that was presented to you over the weekend. I want to make sure everyone's looking at the, the presentation that came from the folder. Thank you.
And it says revised 10/21?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We did take some action this year, as we said. We, of those 4,066 students, we have identified a little over 2,600 of them who are still in the student database. Some of those 4,066 were students that graduated, others have left the district for whatever reason that we can't determine. But of these 2,600 that remain in the district, about 58% of them remained at their current school, so their school of choice. About 9% moved to a charter school. About 20% remained at their, went back to their school of residence, and about 13% went to other district that were, district schools that, but were not their non-resident, were not their resident school. We also, in this analysis, excluded any students that would have the normal movement from middle to, to high schools and elementaries to junior high schools. So it was, the 2,600 students that we looked at were only those students who could return to the school that they were in last year. As you recall, one of the, one of the mysteries when we were doing our cuts over the summer was we didn't really know what the student movement was going to be. So we were assuming, when we went through it, that it could be as high as 100% of those students. Had it been that, it would have, it would have impacted the, had a greater impact on the capacities, especially in the high school area. We did focus those cuts in the, in the Veep and Magnet, we're more heavily focused in the elementary schools at that time. I've put a cup, just a few charts in there to kind of illustrate where the students are that, that moved out of. So I have a high school, a middle school, and an elementary school. As you can see in, this is Claremont High School, they were students that were at Claremont High School and being transported, have moved on to about a dozen other sites in the district, including some charter schools. And if you look at the pie chart, the, the slices that are moved the furthest away represent the, the number of students that went to a, a charter school as opposed to another district school. And when we moved to the middle school in Pershing, pretty much the same result, about a dozen schools that they were going to as well, and pretty much the same percentage of students that went, that remained at Pershing. What we did find in looking at it, that when we look at the students that are going to charter schools, it tended to go, the highest percentage went from high schools, which probably because they have more, maybe more options. But about 17% of the students that lost transportation went to a charter school that were in high schools. In the middle schools, it, it worked out about the, the district average of about 9% to 10%. And as you can see, when we go to the elementary school, it's much smaller, about 5% of the elementary schools. As you can see, as an example here of Johnson Elementary, there were almost 20 schools that those students who were at Johnson Elementary receiving transportation have now dispersed out to about 20, 20 different sites now, of which only two of them are charter schools. So it was mainly district schools that they went to. When we analyze what happened on that, on that, the changes in transportation, what we found is that the students that are returning to the resident schools, were, were returning to their resident school at a much lower rate than we had anticipated. About 20% of those students, those 2,600 students that we analyzed, actually returned to their resident school. So that, that's a good thing because it indicates that the capacity issues are not going to be as, as onerous. We're not going to face, as we look at any cuts that we do, the capacity issues will not be as big an issue as we might have thought over, when we were looking at this in June. The movement of the, the students to charter schools, they were moving to established charter schools. They weren't moving to any new charter school programs. So we can look at that 9% number as a, we can have pretty good confidence that whatever moves we make in the future would be a pretty good indicator of how many students might select a charter school as an option if they lose transportation. We did find that the students are dedicated to dedicated magnets. When we look at the seven dedicated magnets, 83% of those students who lost transportation remained at those dedicated magnets. One thing that we have to consider, though, is that this first round of cuts consisted mainly of the students who live within a five-mile radius of the school that they were attending. Now, if we go further out in the cuts, it's going to be a further distance that the students would have to travel to get to that school that they're attending now, that school of choice. And also, what we found is that transportation is really only one factor in school choice. We have about 50, 57,000 students who are not attending their resident school, and only about 20, less than 25% of those are being transported right now. We also did a parent phone survey through Connect Ed to try to determine what the movement might be going forward. We did about 6,600 calls, called to 6,600 families. About 1,600 of those responded to the survey or completed the survey. Out of those, 65% said that they would find, would not find another way to get their, to have their child go to their current schools. In other words, they wouldn't return to their current school if they lost transportation. 41% of them said that they would return to their neighborhood school, and 27% said they would go to a charter or a private school, something outside the district. Budget recap of where we are now in transportation, and this is loaded without having billed out any of this, there's about $1.4 million of our budget that we bill out to other departments in the district, primarily in the fleet maintenance area. Of our $32 million budget, about $23.5 million is the, falls into that mandated transportation area of special education, Title I, and we've included homeless in there. And the non-mandated area is just under $4 million, and that's primarily the Veep and Magnet transportation that we have budgeted. And then we have some other items such as charter transportation, where we provide transportation to schools like Price, that they pay us for that transportation. So that's fully funded from them. And then we have field trips and so forth, some liability fund that's a wash, whatever we don't use of that, risk management takes back into their budget, back into the general fund. One interesting part, when we look at the overall budget, the, the average annual cost to transport a special education student is about, almost $7,900. That compares to the, to a non-special education student of about $1,250. When we were here in June, we were asked to do some, some things, to implement some things, and we have started on those. One is to look at what process we could go and come up with a five-year plan to eliminate all non-mandated busing. And we will have further discussion on that one. Also, design a parent voucher alternative for special education where they could, parents could be reimbursed if they provided the transportation to the student. We actually have this in place and have had it for, for a period of time. It's basically a mileage reimbursement. Right now, for this year, we're at about 30 families that are taking advantage of that, but it tends to grow as we go further into the fall and more IEPs are completed. But the most that it's peaked in any year so, that we've been doing it, is about 80 families.
Out of, out of the total number of families?
Out of 20, we're transporting 2,600, or 2,100 special ed students now, so...
You say 80?
80 is the most that we've had, and, and that was when we had more families that we were transporting.
I don't want to get into detail discussion of that tonight, but I think we need to look at a very different and aggressive way of marketing it, outreach, et cetera, because obviously, the cost is significant. We need to fulfill our legal obligation, but, you know, it's just a matter of making sure parents know their alternatives that might serve their student better and save the district money. So maybe that's something we could look at how you do it now and, and examine alternatives at another, at a future date.
Sure. Other, other direction that we had was to increase the fee for transportation, which we did, from $340 to $420. The plan is to further increase that in, to... The plan is to further increase that in 2012, 13 to $500 per student.
What's the legal maximum we can charge?
Legal maximum is, for our number of days, it's 850 a day. It works out to almost just under $1,500.
1,485 is the legal maximum. The state establishes it at $8.50 a round trip per day.
1,485 is the legal maximum that we could charge for those who can afford.
$8.50 times 175 days.
Okay. We charge to those who can afford it and are not free and reduce lunch and for transportation that, so, no, you don't have to be rich to go to school, but you don't get a free, but you shouldn't get a free ride if you can afford it either.
All right, guys, guys, we're going to have a civil meeting tonight, and let's, let's go through the presentation.
Other direction was to look at a, a system where we could track electronically the students on and off the buses and to utilize some of the transportation savings to fund that, that system. We have identified a system that we are in the process of doing a pilot at a limited number of schools and limited number, limited number of buses that attaches to, or works through our current GPS system. And, and based on that, we, we're also looking to how we can tie this into special ed buses so that we can get additional reimbursement and maximize our reimbursement for Medi-Cal.
Now, as I understand, we're used, looking at sites, there's already cards, like say for instance, in Stanley Middle, every kid has to have an ID. Are we using, and will the cards be able to be used for library attendance, lunch, and other things?
Correct. We want to, we want to move to a universal ID card that can be used for all those as well, including this.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're looking, looking forward, as Phil had mentioned, we are, we've come to you with four proposals today. One is if we only do mandated transportation only. If we do mandated transportation and, and tag on these current seven dedicated magnet schools, providing transportation there, doing mandated transportation, and the four large dedicated magnets, which are the two performing arts schools and the two language schools. And then last would be to do only mandated transportation and include a reduction, doing PI transportation, but at a reduced level. Currently, under PI, we have to spend 20% of our Title I money on a combination of transportation and supplemental educational services. We have to spend at least 5% of that money in both of those areas. So we have 5% on transportation, 5% on, on the services. Currently, we're spending the other 10% on transportation. So we're spending 15% on transportation, 5% on supplementary education services. So this last one is to what if we reduce the percentage, that 15% down, and shifted it over to those, those other services. It doesn't save general fund dollars because it's federal money that we're doing, but it is shifting services and, and it does, as you'll see when we go through the slides, there are some, some advantages to that. So if we do only mandated transportation, we would only be providing transportation to special education, program improvement, and those other minor programs that I had talked about, primarily the, the homeless and the ADA 504. That would affect transportation for approximately 61, a little over 6,000 students, primarily Veep and Magnet students. It would generate a general fund savings of $3.9 million. There is a potential ADA loss if we apply that 9% that we experienced on the ones that lost transportation this year of $2.9 million. So it would net out at a, at a, just under, when you see the next slide, just under $1 million in net savings if the, if the students go to the charter schools and we lose that ADA.
Gina, I also noticed that we had about 13% of students who left the district for some other reason, and did you try to factor that into any of these scenarios as well?
The 13% that I had shown earlier, they actually didn't leave the district. They went to other district programs that we are getting ADA for, but they weren't their resident, their school of residence or their current school. This particular scenario does increase the potential for some capacity issues, in particular at the, at the high schools, and even more in particular at San Diego High and Hoover High, is, is the ones that we're looking at. Lincoln is the only other one that comes into play, but not at this level. And there, of course, there are fewer educational opportunities, and the enrollment and viability of the magnets and Veep receiving schools would be in question with this implementation. This is just, provides the numbers that we just talked about. If we go with mandated transportation and maintain service to the seven dedicated magnets, it would affect about 4,000, a little over 4,000 students, generate a general fund savings of one, one and a half million dollars a year, and we would have a potential ADA loss of 9%, which would be $1.9 million. And what we have found, if it holds what we saw before, the Magnet students would remain at their, at their, at their current school that they're attending now, at their dedicated Magnet school, at a higher rate than the other students have. So 83% of them did remain at their current school. It will be, I wouldn't anticipate the percentage would be that high because we are getting further out. It's a further distance for them to travel, the students that remain there, but it would likely be at a higher rate than, than the overall. And this is just the numbers that represent that. So as you can see on this one, is it would be a potential net of about half a million dollars loss in implementing this.
A loss.
Correct. Yeah. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, not enough generation, not enough savings to offset the potential ADA loss.
Mr. Robinson, a question on the ADA loss. You're just dealing with raw numbers of this, we get X dollars per ADA per student, and then the savings in transportation and the loss of that ADA to another school. But are you looking at the fact that if you have 369 or 200 less students, that's 369 less students that need a teacher and other support services? Have you calculated into that, into your calculations of cost savings?
We have not.
Okay, so obviously, that's, if you add in those cost savings, it could.
Savings at another, in, in the school sites.
It's hard to know, we have not analyzed that and, as part of it.
Right, that's, that's. The next one is if we do the same thing with the, but maintain the four dedicated magnets at the, the performing arts schools and the two language schools. This would affect 4,300, a little over 4,300 students. General fund savings of $1.8 million and that potential ADA loss of about $2.1 million. So a net of about, potential net of about $300,000 loss, again, without considering any savings, other savings that might occur at the, at the school sites.
I'm sorry. On these, this slide, when we cut transportation this year, did the transportation cuts this year affect any of the, it did affect some of these four schools, right? I know the Language Academy and, and so the estimate was, from your other numbers, that 83% still found ways to get to the school.
Correct.
So, okay, so that's not what you're assuming here as far as returning because the distances are different in some cases? So you don't, you don't, what are you assuming?
What we're assuming here is that it would be at the, this is strictly how many, total there are there.
Okay.
At, at those schools.
Okay.
Attending under these programs.
And recognizing the people that lose transportation, I'm sorry. Recognizing the people that lose transportation in this scenario, for example, the entire Veep program goes away. What's left are those four dedicated magnets. So it's those other ones that may not have the same desire to get back or the same, you know, they're not that 83% that got back to the Magnet school.
And last scenario is if we only did mandated transportation and reduced the level of PI funding for transportation to 8%, which is a reduction of 7%, and shifted that money over to the supplemental education services at the, at the school sites. This would represent a loss of, of transportation for, actually, that's, 8,600 is an incorrect number. It's actually about 7,800 students, as you'll see on the next slide. And that would be Veep Magnet and a little less than 50% of the PI students. The potential ADA loss at 9% again would be $3.8 million. The saving, general fund savings from this would be $6.92 million. This change does impact students who are least able to afford alternate means, alternative means of transportation, because you're getting into those PI students who, who are from those areas that they tend to be a higher need. The reduction in PI transportation doesn't, doesn't have a general fund impact, but it will allow more students to receive supplemental education services at their neighborhood schools. And the transportation for the remaining PI students, it'll be more difficult to administer because it has to be provided to those students that are of the highest need and lowest performing. And so it, it will tend to be less efficient because these PI routes, just like the Veep and Magnet routes, tend to be our most efficient route. So they're falling to that $1,200 a student for transportation as opposed to the 7,800 that you would see in a special education.
I don't understand why you said there wouldn't be a general, a general fund saving. If you do mandated only, you have a net savings of $1 million. So now you're saying if you do mandated only with PI, you get the, you don't have any, so I'm not understanding why you wouldn't have.
There would still be, there would still be.
That million dollars.
The 3.8 million that we would have, but this is kind of a, a victim of the formula because it, it assumes that if we, if we take transportation, we remove transportation for that number of PI students as well as those Magnet students and Veep students, that 9% of them will choose to go to a, to a charter school. So that ends up being 727 students potentially who we would be losing ADA, which is $3.8 million potential loss in ADA. That offsets that 3.04 million dollars.
Right, right.
So, yeah. It goes back to, is there savings in other places by not having as many students attending? If, if that is the case of them going to the charter schools.
I think you may be surprised there, anyway.
So to summarize for the four, the potential is anywhere from an additional 6,000, a little over 6,000 students, or actually, a little over 79, 7,800 students, down to as few as 4,000 students in each of these scenarios. And the savings, net savings, anywhere between a million and, and a loss of a half a million In any of these, any of these changes, transportation will be less efficient because we would be eliminating our most efficient routes. The savings per students is going to decrease, especially when you compare it to the current year where we affected 6,000 stu, or 4,000 students at a, just under $8 million in savings. And in these, where we are affecting is, you know, 4,000 students and for a, a million and a half dollar savings in those types of areas. Transportation savings, again, may be diluted by the potential loss of ADA. Facility modifications may be needed based on capacity issues, again, not anywhere near the extent that we were looking at when we were looking at it in June. And it may have some impact on school diversity. Some additional considerations, obviously, any school realignment or closure actions are going to impact any, any of the transportation pictures. This did not consider any of those. The CSEA OSS contract quantifies a minimum number of bus drivers, extra board drivers, and driver trainers. So changing this would require collaboration and agreement between the association and the district. And there may be some need for adding home-to-school transportation for select schools. This would be at an, at an additional cost.
So what is the contract number? Number two, you say we have a certain number?
That would be.
393 drivers are required to be maintained.
Again?
393.
Thank you.
So as you asked, the question is, we have to maintain 393 drivers by contract, whether or not we have buses for them to drive or not? Is that, how much?
If we, if we, to go below that 393 drivers would have, would require collaboration and agreement between the district and, and the association.
So.
To change that in the, in the agreement.
So the options that you gave us, does these options take us below that number?
We're actually already below that number with last, with the current year cuts.
I'm, I'm pausing because I'm concerned that if this requires collaboration and agreement, and you asking us to take action before we have the collaboration and agreement, is that what you're doing? I'm, I'm.
There. There is language, as far as the drivers go, that if the cuts are a result of board action for changes in programs, that we can go below that, below that table.
Could we get a comment from the council?
The matter's currently, the matter's currently under grievance and arbitration. My suggestion is we don't make any comments on it.
Okay.
I think more directly to Ms. Jackson's question, I think.
Guys, we need to, we need to listen to the stuff.
We brought forward, or are bringing forward four potential scenarios, and I think we're looking for board direction on which.
Okay.
Scenarios to work through. As you'll see, there's, there's many factors that all get wrapped around this, whether it's school capacity, school closure and realignment. So I think we're just, as we work through the timing of all this, we're looking for which direction on one of these or any of these to pursue.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. Just handed the gavel to Vice President Evans. My motion is that we reject all four options. Is there a, is there a, is there a, is there a second to the motion?
A second?
To reject all four?
Yeah, to reject all.
Right now, yeah?
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We've got several speakers that we'll call up, and then we'll have a board discussion. Thank you, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Rowland. Okay, we're going to limit public comment to one minute apiece. I'm going to call up Ethel Larkins, Dan Ortiz, Kathy Deacon, Larry Isom, Moira Albritton, and Sovee Knowles.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Kova, my name is Dan Ortiz. I'm the labor rep for CSEA, the OSS unit, and we're here to speak on the matter of transportation of the four scenarios, and I know we have limited time here. What I want to speak to you is that if you look at scenarios two and three, that those are obviously non-starters. There is no savings in that. It'll, it'll cost you money. The only two scenarios that may yield some, some potential savings, and this, this could be disputed depending on the numbers and the assumptions you're making and projections, are scenario one and scenario four. Scenario four first, which is the mandated transportation only, would be a very limited amount of, of savings for the amount of disruption that you would cause to students, right? Over 6,000 students, which you have already disrupted this year by the cuts that were already enacted and, and went into effect July 1st of this year. The last scenario, although there is a bigger potential savings, let me just tell you that that is going to affect some very needy kids. Kids are going to be impacted that cannot afford to provide for alternative transportation.
Ethel Larkins, chapter president, OSS 724. In light of what Mr. Ortiz has just said, plus we would like to remind the board of the recommendation of their own transportation tiger team that would not, there will not be no significant cost savings in reduction district transportation services when lots of classified workers are laid off, reduced in work hours, loss of pay through furlough dates, while substantial raises are both being entertained and granted by the board during financial crisis. The wrong side of history is filled with names and decisions of individuals who failed to do the right thing, especially so when clear directions have shown the right path to undertake. For the record, CSEA and its OSS bargaining unit, chapter 724, we stand in opposition of the four options being considered by you today. The proposed cuts to transportation services are not related to the budget crisis, but are driven by hidden political agendas and leaders who should instead be protecting district educational options. The proposed cuts to community-valued improvement programs do not have the best interests of the district nor our students as their center core. District parents need to know this, and it is their right to expect access to various educational programs, options for their children. Because of this, it is the children and the students of the educational success that the members of CSEA have been working to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Isom, chief job steward. I'm involved in the grievances going on right now. Guys, this is about students. I have, I talked, and we heard a student from San Diego High School who talked about how she had to get home and pick her brother up. She was no longer transported by San Diego Unified, so she was using public transportation. She gets out at 2:30, she goes and picks her brother up, who gets out at 4:00, and gets home at 6 o'clock at night. I think that's a hardship that we shouldn't be putting on students.
All right, that's not fair.
It's, and I think that-
It's not okay.
If we make the right decision right now, thank you, Richard, for making your motion, if you make the right decision right now, we'll have a chance to do the right thing, guys. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I'm Sobi Knowles, my address is on file, and I'm speaking out about this transportation issue. I thank you, Mr. Barrera, for pulling your motion, or making your motion. I'm looking at the loss of transportation for Veep and Magnet students. Mainly, I'm concerned about the Veep program. That's a program that we use to integrate our schools, and I just feel that losing that program is going to be segregating our schools, not integrating our schools. And so I'm very, very concerned about that. As a parent, I, you know, I want us to have the right to go to a choice school and not just, and, and integrate. Integrate's where we're coming from, and I'm just so afraid that we're going to lose integration, and we're going to have segregation again. Also, we talked a little bit about Title I funding, 20% that needs to be spent on Title I funding. What's occurring there is, they want to cut transportation and apply that to tutoring. Well, that money's going to be used for tutoring, but it's for contracting outside sources. Thank you so much for listening.
I happen to be the bus driver for the one and only Stanley Bus. I squeeze 65 children into a school bus every day. The first day of school, I picked up 15 only students, where last year we picked up 56 students, in that Sterling Court at Altadena. I've faced those parents, I have had to reject those children, and when somebody said Stanley Middle School, Stanley Middle School now has one bus, who, my understanding, the principal got to pick those 65 students. How fair is that? And we have one bus where we had six or seven. Sheila, my question to you, how does it feel? Lady of color, only female, only lady of color. We're going in the wrong direction, ladies and gentlemen, in this school district. You need to open up these buses, you need to let the children experience other cultures by transporting them to Magnet Schools voluntary integration. Don't go backwards, don't bring back the '60s in San Diego, move forward and transport these kids.
Good evening, Moira Albretton, President Barrera. May I have a smidgen of leniency on the time?
A smidgen, we've got a lot of speakers tonight, yeah.
Okay, I understand. Everything is on file. I want to just address slides 11 and 12. Slide 11 is a bit misleading. There is nothing inherent about students with disabilities that makes them more costly to transport. The reality is that geographic distribution and their destinations for these students combined to create a perfect storm, and, Mr. Robinson, I know knows this, this is the distance traveled, time onboard the bus, low ridership, and high stop per rider ratio. Students with disabilities are not riding buses for fun, they ride to access the educational settings deemed specifically appropriate to them and offered by this district. Slide 12. San Diego Unified seems to be proposing to treat one class of students disparately among all the groups of students that it transports, simply because they are disabled. This stands in stark contrast from the resolution this very body adopted on 11/30/2010. A targeted voucher program for students receiving mandated special education transportation demonstrates that the good idea fairy visited the PowerPoint without consulting your CAC. I will list just quickly why these vouchers are a non-optimal solution for special education students. I'm sorry, students receiving special education services, that's the language we'd like to be using, and I need to demonstrate it. So one, unless wildly popular, there's not going to be a lot of savings, and I can give you a PowerPoint of my own on that, as evidenced. Reason two, vouchers are more trouble than they're worth, is that parents already have this option and are not using it. Nobody is forcing students onto buses. Reason three is to pressure parents of students receiving mandated bussing, often via translator, in order to supply their child's own educational services, will be a problem in complying with federal and state regulations. Reason four, safety, this is going to get applause, when incentivizing mom's taxi services, remember, students are indisputably safer, between seven and 44 times safer, depending on the study you look at, riding with a professional driver on a big yellow school bus than riding with me and my Honda.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for discussion. Ms. Jackson?
Certainly, I second the motion, because I do have concerns about what has been presented, but, but let me say this, what the board has committed to is a great school in every neighborhood, and many of our neighborhoods, and we're not, we're not going back, because several of our neighborhoods are already diversified, and I don't believe in diversity on the backs of children with what we have been doing for years and years and years. I believe in families that have moved into the community and are part of the community that are helping the schools. But my reason for supporting this particular motion right now is because I can't support conversations that haven't occurred that should occur. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, Dr. Evans?
And, and just to be clear about this, Ms. Jackson, the conversations that haven't occurred are, would you, I mean, I agree, but would you specify what those are? In terms of, well, I mean-
Lawyer put me at kid.
Okay, lawyer said you can't talk. Okay. Okay, well, okay, but basically that there are some legal issues, let's say.
We approve a billion-dollar budget this year, and it has, and the bargaining units, in many cases, objected to elements of it, and filed grievances. I'm not talking about anything specific, I'm talking in general. And that's going to happen as part of the process. We're talking about a policy decision tonight, and then based that policy decision, there may be impacts, which we would have to, in good faith, discuss with the various impacted units. That's the way the system, it works. You can insist all you want, ma'am, but did anybody pay attention to the fact that we are very likely going to be insolvent in the next, before July 1, and that this board won't be making this decision? An administrator will come in and eliminate your bussing, close your schools, eliminate your programs. So the point is, this is a, this is a critical element to us solving our budget problem. The bottom line is-
Why did you open up?
Hey, no, 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 we, we are not going to do that.
This is a critical element to solving our budget problem. I mean, we are subsidizing students who can afford bussing, and we are going contrary to this board and the past board's neighborhood-based schooling. So how can you, I mean, we have a thousand, in my, Mission Bay High School, we have 1,000 kids bussing every day.
Good for Mission Bay.
So, so how does, how does this fit in both? How can you, in any good conscience, based on the fiscal nightmare we're facing, that you all helped create, say you're not even going to look at options to, to save money, and that you're doing, you're going to maintain a system that's contrary to your community-based schooling? If your community-based schooling, just a phrase that has absolutely no meaning, are we going to spend millions of dollars a year, which runs contrary to that, that basic direction? So this, this is a sadly political motion, because yes, one special interest is raising their concern, instead of the fact that we are looking at maybe going on a business next year, and this board, again and again and again, is making decisions that is pushing us over the edge towards financial insolvency, and this is just one more of those.
So let me speak to the, no, 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 please, let me, let me, let me speak to the motion. We just looked at four options. Out of those four options, one option potentially saves $1 million. Very unlikely that it saves $1 million, given all of the impacts and the difficulties in even implementing that decision. And in order to save $1 million, we're going to have a tremendously harsh impact on 6,000 students, including focusing on students at four or seven of the most outstanding schools in this district, including the students you just performed for us tonight, from Crown Point Elementary School. So, and I'm going to, you know, and I'm going to speak to this when we, when we get to the next item on, on school closures. There's a way of solving our budget problem that is not about cannibalizing each other. There's, if we're going to solve this budget crisis, it's not going to be using as an excuse the potential of saving a little bit of money to pit some people against each other, for some purpose that is not quite clear, given that there's next to no savings involved in this item itself. What Mr. Bennett talked to us about is the power that we have together, as a, as a community of people who care about public schools. And if what we're going to do is, we're going to kill ourselves through 1,000 little cuts that don't add up to making any real impact in what our budget solution needs to be, which is a revenue solution, which is arguing back to the state of California to give us back the money they've stolen from us. If we're going to give up our ability to be a united community, and a powerful united community, in order to fight that fight, in order to potentially save a little bit of money here and there, I don't believe in that. I don't believe that that's what we're, that that's going to get us out of this budget crisis in any way. And I, and I also don't believe that the way that we get out of a budget crisis is to simply target, in this case, a few students at a few schools. It's not, it's a 6,000, 6,000 students. You know, incur devastating cuts on those students, devastating cuts on the programs that those students are involved in. In other words, throwing them off the ship-
Throwing them off the bus.
Throwing them off, or throwing them, throwing them under the bus. In order to keep capitulating to the state? Not a chance. I don't-
This is simply wrong-headed, it is the opposite.
What community-based school reform is about, is about us coming together as a community. Actually supporting each other, rather than turning on each other, and especially when we're, turning on each other for what? For, to save nothing? It makes no sense. You know, I voted against, in the first place, requiring the staff to waste their time to come back to us with these four options, which I don't believe they even support. So it's time to get serious about solving our budget crisis, and it's not to do it in this way. That's, that's what my motion is about.
Well, after the presentation, I think some, a couple of things became very clear, that there are some things that we could do to save a little bit of money, and what that, what the repercussions of some of those actions are, are to actually drive children away from our public schools. And I think that what really, the first thing that came to mind when we saw some of the proposals from the staff, was that by eliminating some bussing, we're actually going to lose so much money in ADA, by losing just a small percentage of our students that we're pushing away, that the end result is, that by thinking we're going to save a penny now, we're really going to lose a pound later. And that's the, that's the statement, a penny wise and a pound foolish. And I think we've got a, I think that Mr. Barnett has some very good points, in that we have to be very diligent at figuring out, how do we balance our budget, so that we are, performing our fiduciary responsibility and keeping this school district solvent? But in, in our efforts to do that, in our zeal to balance the budget, we have got to make sure that we're being very careful, that the decisions that we make, that we think are going to save money, really don't end up costing us more money in the long run. And I, that's exactly one of the, that's the reason why I'm going to support this measure, because I think by eliminating the bussing for Magnet Schools and other choice opportunities, I think is what we're really going to be doing, is costing our budget more money. And that was infinitely clear by the presentation of the staff. And there's other things that we may be considering, hoping to save money, that in, in reality, will push families and kids away from our school district, like raising kindergarten through third grade class size, up to 30 to 1. I don't think that's going to keep parents and kids in our school district. I think those parents are going to take their kids and put them in charter schools that are, have 20 to 1 student ratios in kindergarten through third grade. Some charter schools are at 16 to 1, somebody said. So I don't know, you know, I think that we've got to be very careful with the decisions that we make, so that we really are saving money in the long run. Thank you.
I'm going to direct my comments to the other board members and the superintendent, and one of the things we do is we have a board meeting in public. I know it's very easy to get up here and give political speeches and appeal to the crowd, and, and sometimes I do it myself, because the crowd happens to be in agreement with what I'm saying. I'm not saying anyone is not doing that, but this is really a point for us to discuss what is going on here. I, I'm disappointed in how this presentation has come about, for, for two reasons. First of all, I think that some of the information here is not accurate, when it's, it's very slanted in terms of showing the, the limited savings. I think Mr. Barnett pointed out, in terms of, you can't just subtract the ADA funding from the savings, because if you're taking the ADA away from, you're also saving funds in terms of that, of that child being at the school. So it is, is more complicated than that. The other issue that I am very disappointed in terms of us discussing this, is that there are legal issues behind this presentation, legal, contractual, whatever type of issues they may be, that have not been thoroughly discussed before we're having this conversation, which is, you know, one of the reasons why Ms. Jackson is supporting, holding up on this. But we, there are, there are two issues here. One is, is what can we afford to do? I mean, I, I think it's still the issue of, we still have to look at the issue of insolvency. If there's almost no savings for something, of course, it's not worth doing, but we have to look at if, in fact, there are real savings. And the other issue we have to look at is, we are so wedded to how we have been doing things, and one of the initiatives of this board is to have a quality school in every neighborhood. Right now, right now, we have 50, 57,000 students. 57,000, that's half of the students in this district, do not attend a school in their neighborhood. This is really a problem for strong community fabric, for, for strong neighborhood schools. And, and, you know, we have to be careful, because there are many cases where we are incentivizing people to leave their neighborhood. Sometimes they have, they don't believe they have a quality school in their neighborhood. Sometimes they do have a quality school in their neighborhood, but they perceive that it is not a quality school. My own formula, just off the top of my head, would be, a true neighborhood school would at least have, two-thirds of the school would be kids from the neighborhood and maybe one-third who are, who are coming in from outside. That's in terms of the school itself. But we have neighborhoods in which, you know, again, one out of four or one out of five kids in that very neighborhood are actually attending that school. We have, it's, it's a big project. We have to address this all at once. We have to look at why people not, do not want to attend a particular school. I mean, it's going to be a gradual process. And that's what we're trying to look at, is how do we make a gradual process from a, a school district in which everybody crisscrosses across the entire district, whether it's in a bus or in a, in a private car that people can afford, or whether we're going to have a school district that's more based on, on neighborhood schools? And that's what's going to produce more community involvement. So, at this point, I, I, I think that there, the, I think that some of the presentation is slanted in terms of how the costs and figures are, are presented. I think that if we did more advanced planning, when it's talking about losing students to charter schools, if we were talking, sitting down with students and families and talking about the options in their neighborhood, we would not necessarily lose that many. So, I, I feel like at this point, my, my hands are a little bit tied because of these complicating issues about some of the information presented and some of the legal issues. So, my, what I was going to propose was a variation that wasn't exactly in any one of these four, that would be moving us more towards a neighborhood schools, but doing it in an orderly way that protected some of our, our most important and successful programs. But what I hope we would do is, is regroup, get information about this, and bring it back. So.
Thank you.
So, I, I will support the motion if it is to bring it back with better information.
I can support that.
What does that mean?
It means that we consult with staff, we have the Transportation Department go over this information, and we come back and reconsider.
So, are you asking, are you asking me to amend my motion?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm not going to amend my motion. I mean, part of, part of the point is, we've cut transportation enough. We've done enough. We've cut it down to the point that, and, and staff frankly has made this point to us on several occasions. They've done the analysis, they've given it to us, we've seen this. This is not the first time we've had this conversation. I don't want to ask the staff to do more analysis, where I believe they're going to come back to us with roughly the same, you know, options, the same cost savings, and, and I'm not going to support it then. So I, I, I appreciate your tone, Dr. Evans, I do. I appreciate you trying to get us back to a, a, a productive conversation, but I don't agree to amend my motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let, let, yeah, let me say this. We hear, people are here tonight because something is on the agenda to touch each and every one of you. The concern that my peers have is that by not taking this action, that at some point in time in the future we become insolvent, we can't pay our bills. We can't keep everything. We can't, and so certainly people will probably come tonight and say, Ms. Jackson, you've always said you wouldn't close schools because you believe in a school in every neighborhood. Okay? So, we, we have to do something to balance our budget. And so while I support this motion now, I certainly would be willing to bring back something else at a later date, because we really have to be very concerned that, I believe we need to fight Sacramento as much as we can with all of our, I agree with what you said, we have to be a unified force going to the state, because the state is causing us to be in this particular position. And while I will always try to seem extreme by saying, by closing all the schools, we can't impact too many students as well right now, because it's their education that is suffering. Most of us in this room, we're educated, we'll work, we'll find a way to make things, you know, come together. But the children that are sitting in those classrooms right now need to be educated. They need to be transported. But we have to find a way to keep that going while we are fighting Sacramento. If we make a mistake, and I'm saying this to you because, of course, we need your, your support in helping us figure this out, because if we don't do it the right way while we're fighting them, they'll be the ones who say, you know what? You're insolvent, we're going to put somebody else in charge, and then charge you the extra money. And we don't want to do that either. But we need to be able to find a way to, to keep our district stable. And, and so, I think, yes, we have cut transportation a lot. I also believe in neighborhood schools. And I believe that a lot of my schools in my area have not received the best because we spend so much in transportation. But having said that, we have pared down the transportation, and school, students are returning to their home schools because the schools are coming up. And I think that as our schools get better, the more kids go to their neighborhood schools anyway, which will offset some of that transportation. I just want to caution the audience, I'm not going to change my vote, I support the motion that is on the floor. But I, what I want you, is as much as you are here with us tonight, we need you to be with us for the rest of this fight. And what happens is, sometimes you're here with us tonight, and then two weeks from now the place is empty. All right? And it's just us going, you know, but I, we need you. We need you not only tonight, we're going to need you, because I believe that, one thing I did hear Mr. Bennett say is that if more school districts, if more school districts push back, then guess what? The state would be held accountable. It can't just be one, even though we're very large. So our mission, our goal has to be something that does an initiative that convinces other school boards that they need to do what we're doing, and that it stand fast on behalf of our students and our staff.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to make a, a quick statement in terms of, as far as voting yes or no on this motion. I'm going to vote against the motion because of not including the amendment that I suggested, although I do realize that would be very problematic to act on it tonight, anyway.
Okay. Please vote on the motion. Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Let's move on to the item I-8, the school realignment closure committee.
Kids drop their homework!
Okay. Appreciate the patience of everybody. Okay, so we will begin. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barnett, for the reminder. Just to be clear, this is an information-only item tonight. I'm sure Mr. Stover in his presentation is going to go through the timeline leading up to decisions. So tonight is an information item, it's going to be a report out from the staff and the staff committee. So no decisions will be made tonight. Mr. Stover.
All right, thank you. You have, in your brown folder as well, a revised document, so please do not use the one in your, in your binder, use the one in your, in your, thank you, in your brown folder. My intent is to give you a very quick update on where we are in our work as a committee. As of, as of tonight, we have had all of our initial meetings. As you may remember, our process was designed where we would meet with every single cluster in the district, have an initial meeting where we would inform them of our recommendations for the purpose of beginning a dialogue with that cluster. We have had 16 of those, we have 16 clusters, we've had 16 meetings. So we, we have fulfilled that, a part of our commitment to you. We've also had several second and third meetings with clusters for them to provide us input and ask questions. My best estimate of where we are right now is, is that we have presented to over 1,200 community members. So in that sense, I would, I would suggest that the process is working, because we have, we have an auditorium full here tonight, we've had an auditorium full last night, we had hundreds of people at the Hoover Cluster, we've had hundreds of people at the Madison Cluster come out. So in that sense, we are doing what we set out to do, which was provide some initial recommendations and then seek community input on that. As you will remember, the, the board identified a, a list that they wanted us to come back with of 10 schools for approximately a $5 million savings. The committee has been meeting, we're meeting every single week to provide that list to you. This page shows three, three basic categories. We have a, a list of schools here that are recommended for input, a draft recommendation related to closure. We have also recommended that, for the San Diego High School Cluster, that the board consider, should a bond, a second bond be approved, that we build a high school in the southwest part of the district, which is the part of our district that is least served from a high school perspective, and there's most stress on San Diego High School because of that. Our point number three is we're, we're recommending some consolidations as well, and then grade level changes. Those are the four basic categories that we have identified, and we are providing you tonight all of the schools that are involved in those recommendations to, as of tonight. This is up to date, it's why you have it revised. We actually made some changes to some recommendations on Friday and Saturday, and this is, this is including those. We have here on page five, a secondary list of schools. These are schools that were considered as meeting certain criteria for closure, consolidation, and for one reason or another, the committee decided not to implement these schools with, as, as a recommendation. Some of these schools were in either-or situation. We could have, we could have recommended one school or another. We recommended School A. School B was not picked, because there would be no capacity if we closed both of them and the rest of the schools in the cluster. But should the, the, the school board say to us, we don't like your recommendation for School A, then we would have School B to go to in the sense of, as a backup. So these 21 schools are basically backup in the case that we have to come back to the, to the board, based on board recommendation. Very important, slide six is very, very important for where we are right now. There are certain, certain factors that ultimately, when we come back to you at the end of November with draft recommendations for your input, those recommendations will depend on certain actions. Class size reduction is a major component of that. With, with reduction, or with a, a restatement of larger class sizes, it would certainly make it easier to have capacity at neighborhood schools for schools that are closed. Transportation, we just, we just talked about that. Number three, number six is a big item. I don't want to go through all of these, but number six is a big item. We, we're constantly getting asked about choice continuity. The board, several, many, many, apparently many years ago, established a policy for choice continuity in the district. Some of our, our closure recommendations would be tied to a change in board policy related to choice continuity. So I think at a, at another meeting perhaps, or in early November, we, we will bring an item to you for you to discuss, the concept of, when a child gets into kindergarten, right now they're grandfathered in to go to the high school, all the way through, based on what we're calling choice continuity. Siblings are guaranteed those kinds of choices. So we would, we would ask you to look at that. This process is neither an art or a science, it is both. People say, why don't you look at the data and just take the top 20 schools that meet the, the 10 criteria the most? Just pick those 20 and close them. People are confused about why, you know, we are closing number one and two, but not number four, or number one and six and not number five. Well, it's because it is not just, it is not just data-driven. There are also many other factors that can't be quantified as we look at a school. There are special education, there are, for example, schools that on the surface meet the criteria, but we have very specialized programs for medically fragile children at those schools. And we cannot disrupt that and, and try and replicate that in another school in another place. That doesn't show up on a sheet of data, but it's a very important factor. We have schools that on paper would meet the criteria, but they are in a part of a district where the socioeconomic status says parents can barely afford cars and transportation. If there are no schools nearby where students can get to, we cannot close that school. Those are the, the factors that don't show up on a, on a data sheet, but are very, very important. We've talked to you before about the factors that we looked at. We've talked about the clusters. We have indeed done all of the initial cluster meetings that we were asked to do. And now to get to the timeframe. We've been following this judiciously. We did begin, at the very, very, very beginning of September, to, to seek and provide input to the clusters. That has continued, it will continue virtually every night for the next several weeks, as we go into second and third meetings with clusters. I want to make a quick, in a clear statement, that the clusters are coming to the committee and indicating to us that they want those second and third meetings, and we're scheduling them as best we can to do that. Tonight, we're providing you the update. November 29th will be the first reading of the recommendations by the board. We have, make it clear, we have not presented you a list of recommendations yet. The list of schools that you have in front of you in this PowerPoint is not our list of recommendations that we will bring to you on the 29th. It's very important to say that. That, that would belie the process of community input that we're trying to look, to look for. So I want to make it very clear. The list of the schools that's in the PowerPoint are, are not the list of schools that we will bring to you in, at the end of November. It, it will be different. December 6th, we have scheduled on your calendar a board workshop. It says tentative, but I believe it's actually been scheduled now as a workshop for you to hear community input and to provide input back to us. So on the, at, on the 29th, you'll provide input, on the 6th, you'll provide input, and then on the 13th, we will provide you the final recommendations from the committee with all of the input gathered together. And we believe that it's important, as you saw on Ron's PowerPoint and on ours as well, that, that we need that transition time to transition the schools that are going to be closed, the students that need to go elsewhere, and we need timeframe for our budget purposes as well. So that's basically what I have to say for the, from the, for the community perspective. Please note that on this last page, there is a website where all of the PowerPoints for every single cluster have been posted. The data that we've looked at has been posted. The best practices, recommendations, other articles that have been written on school closings are all on that www.sandy.net/realignment, and that's my update for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stover. We have about 80 speakers signed up, and we're going to limit public comment to a minute apiece, and we're going to be pretty strict about that, very strict about that. If you, if you've heard people, you know, make the comment that you wish to make and you choose to let that go, we'd all appreciate that. So, we'll, we'll start calling folks up. Aaron Brown, Kristen Brownell, Tori Brownell, Mary Hardick, Susan Hanna.
Hello. I'm a parent at Marvin Elementary of a kindergarten student. I live in Oak Park, but I did not-
Give us your, give us your name, please.
Oh, it's Aaron Brown, I apologize.
Thanks, yeah.
I live in Oak Park, but I did not want to send my child to my neighborhood school. After months of research, I chose Marvin over all of the others, and I do drive there. Shortly before the school year began, I learned that Marvin's API for 2011 had risen 59 points over 2010, putting us at a 917. I can only imagine that the amazing increase from an already impressive 858 will raise substantial interest in Marvin as parents- high test scores and thriving children. Where will our children be next year? Will they be forced into subpar schools where the children average 100 to 200 points less? When I look at the raw data about how well our schools and our children are doing side by side with the other schools, I do not see that Marvin belongs on this list. I see a school that deserves recognition.
Thank you, thank you very much.
My name is Kristin Brownell, Dr. Brownell, and I'm a parent of Vista Grande students for the last six years. I also volunteer. I canceled clinics, I could come today. I want to challenge you to look at the qualities of the school that you're recommending that be closed. Vista Grande, per the board's rankings, recommendations has 280, but over 31 other schools rank less than 280. And Vista Grande is, has an API of 912, is a California distinguished school, has Title I academic achievement, California Business for Education Excellence, All Gate Certified Teachers, and a very strong foundation. I live two blocks down the street, and I wonder what the board's thinking of doing with that property. It's part of the community in Tierra Santa. We have a dog park up there, we have soccer games up there, and thinking either like a gardener or like a surgeon, quickly, it's a tree, choose which branches. Cut a healthy one or cut a sick branch.
Thank you.
My name is Tori Brownell. I am a former Vista Grande elementary student, and I am opposing the closure of this very special school. I went to Vista Grande from kindergarten to fifth grade, a total of six years. Vista Grande is a very special and amazing school, which I would know. Our school has received some outstanding awards. They include the California Distinguished School Award, the California Title I Academic Award, the California Business Award. Why close a school that succeeds? This school has wonderful teachers, wonderful students, and lastly, wonderful activities. Students can take part in History Day, Science Field Day, Project Citizen, Fine Arts. We also have a very wonderful gate program. All of the things that make Vista Grande individual and unique. We are one of the best schools around, so why close it? Thank you.
My name is Mari Hardick, and my information is on file. In an article found on the district's website just last month, Marvin Elementary was specifically named as having the most significant increase in English language arts over the 2010 school year in the entire district. 80.6% of our students are now proficient or advanced in this category, and furthermore, our math results and science results steadily increased to 84% and 86.7%, respectively. Marvin Elementary is a high-performing school, as evident by these numbers. Marvin matters. In that same article, Richard Barrera is quoted as saying, "All of us in San Diego and in California owe an enormous debt of gratitude to our school communities. Facing the worst financial crisis to ever hit the public education system, our teachers, principals, support, staff, parents, and students continue to keep their focus and make clear, steady progress in educating California's next generation. This progress will all stop if you close our school. Marvin matters. I've read and reread each version of the school's realignment closure committee recommendations and supporting documents and respectfully disagree with its conclusion on numerous points. It states that our cluster meetings have been well-attended with significant input from the community.
Thank you.
In September, there were four. In October, there were only five, and it was announced at that meeting that no decision to close any school had been made. We found out the next morning on the news.
Thank you.
If you close Marvin, our choices are two schools that are on second round of closures-
We're going to have to cut you off, and I'm going to have to-
And two to be closed next year, five schools that are lower in performance than Marvin by significant amounts, and one that is at capacity. Don't close our school.
We cannot have people speak past their limit, and we will enforce the limits. Please go ahead.
No questions.
No questions.
My name is Susan Hanna. I have been teaching at Marvin for 18 years, and I'm a Marvin alumnus as well. I want to remind you about yet another reason Marvin is an asset to our district and to our community. Five years ago, we responded to a specific need in our community and established a junior kindergarten program. We brought students into the district who would have stayed another year in preschool, also bringing additional ADA money into our district. We are teaching our kids to be students, and just look at the results. Our JK program has gained international attention. We've had visitors from as far away as Japan come with the intent to borrow ideas from our successful program. Last year, officials from Sacramento came to Marvin to learn more about our junior kindergarten in order to give direction to the state mandated transitional kindergarten. Also last year, you designated Marvin as one of only a handful of transitional kindergarten sites. We have the only transitional kindergarten program that has been in existence for more than a year. Marvin's transitional kindergarten is wildly successful. Our school is wildly successful.
Thank you.
Our team is wildly successful. Please don't destroy us.
Donna Jackson, Patricia Lamparella, Valerie De León, Shannon Scully, and Patricia Palma.
I'm Donna Jackson, the deputy counsel in Tierra Santa for Vista Grande. This is how the letter reads on our behalf of Tierra Santa Community Council, which we did not meet with you guys. Tierra Santa Community Council hereby states its firm position against the closure of Vista Grande Elementary located at Piscina 66 Tiguan Boulevard, Tierra Santa, San Diego. This school is an essential element of the Tierra Santa community, does not only provide a superb learning and safe environment for hundreds of our children, but also provides support for a number of community services. Its administration ranks at the top of all the school administration in the city, is one of the most cost-effective schools in the city of San Diego Unified School District. Surety San Diego Unified School District can easily find other ways of meeting its budget constraints.
And the last part of the letter is, "The Tierra Santa Community Council offers free of charge to marshal and apply its talented and extraordinary experienced membership to assist in the search for an acceptable alternate resolution."
Okay.
And still, it's Donna Jackson.
Thanks very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
I'm Rick Williams, and I'm number 16 on your list, and I'd like to donate my time to Donna Jackson.
Okay. We don't actually do that, but if you choose not to speak, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. This will be very short. I just want to speak as a private citizen, a voter, and a certificated employee of San Diego Unified School District. Rather than closing the schools, I would support freezing pay and step-in pay increases until the economic crisis is over.
I'm a parent. We've pretty well established that this is not a good year financially. So in a situation like this, if you look for schools that ought to stay open, I think you would want to look for schools that are the most effective at using our tax dollars. Vista Grande is a school that makes excellent use of our money. Vista Grande is a school where all student groups perform above state and district averages. Hispanic and African-American students have test scores that are much higher than the district average. Vista Grande is a school where economically disadvantaged kids, who make up more than half of the student's body, show academic achievement that ranks nine out of 10. And yes, rich white kids do well at Vista Grande, too. Vista Grande is a school where teachers, staff, and administrators work together. Along the students and parents, the people who work at Vista Grande have found a formula that works. Vista Grande is effective for all students. In times like these, Vista Grande is a school that should be a model. We should be figuring out how to bring more students to Vista Grande, maybe through changing the boundaries. Vista Grande already makes excellent use of our tax dollars, and it should be at the top of the list. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Stover, my daughter asked me to tell you she loves your tie.
Thanks very much.
Valerie De León. The Realignment Committee compiled information to assist them with the selection of schools to close. Unfortunately, the information they compiled on Vista Grande isn't accurate. Vista Grande's current enrollment is 400 children, 151 that are within school boundaries. Your data shows 258 non-residents attending Vista Grande. 131 of those students choice in from other SAR cluster schools and are residents of the 92124 ZIP code, including military, who choose not to attend our neighborhood schools for a better education at Vista Grande. Do you have adequate space and quality schools within the SAR cluster for all of these children? With the elimination of busing, our numbers will only drop by 38 students using that one bus that comes to Vista Grande. Many children that lost busing have still chosen to remain at Vista Grande at the cost of their own transportation. They do this to attend a California distinguished school with an API of 912. Question is, will the San Diego School Board make the quality of our children's education a priority and protect those schools that are performing well? Or will they close those campuses and send those students to campus-
Thanks, thanks very much.
I'm Shannon Scully, and I wanted to, first of all, let you know that Vista Grande has participated in the county Project Citizen. Not only were our students successful there, but they were also successful in bringing to the board a plan to have a district-wide Styrofoam tray recycling program. You may remember voting on it just four months ago. I'd also like to bring to your attention the unique community we have at our school. We have programs such as the Running Club, which promotes good health and exercise. We have Science Build Day and Fine Artists, an art class that builds self-expression and confidence through art. We have special end-of-the-year activities for our graduating fifth graders. Just as important, we have Safety Patrol and Student Council. Every one of these programs is supported and funded by the Vista Grande Foundation, which is entirely made up of parent volunteers. And if I may add, half of those volunteers of the board are military moms. Our foundation also proudly supports our wonderful teachers and support staff with monies to supplement classroom materials. Where else will you find this type of strong parental support? Nowhere.
Nora Connolly, Luke Sepurik, Justin Servie, Sidney Warner, Rosa Berenice Walker.
My name is Justin Servie. I'm a fifth grader at Vista Grande Elementary in Tierra Santa. I'm standing here today to urge you to keep my school open. I stood here four months ago with my fourth-grade Project Citizen student group from Vista Grande, presenting a grand view for a green school, a resolution to ban Styrofoam plates from our school cafeterias. On that day, this board passed that resolution. It was a very rewarding day after all our hard work and research, and Vista Grande was going to be the pilot school for alternative trays. We need to finish this project. That experiences and all of my experiences at Vista Grande are preparing me for middle school and life. I am the vice president of Student Council, a member of Safety Patrol, and was a California State History Day winner because of Vista Grande and its wonderful teachers and staff. I had these opportunities because Vista Grande is a grand school. Vista Grande is going, is doing all the right things. Our API scores have risen, our latest was 912. We were named a California distinguished school.
Thanks, Kristen.
My name is Sidney Warner, and I'm in the fifth grade at Vista Grande. Today, I would like to share with you why I think Vista Grande should stay open. Even though our school is small, the kids that do attend are obviously getting the education they need. As you know, our test scores are through the roof. I'm in the gate program at school, and I feel I've accomplished something new every day. Every year I have attended the school, I am confident that I will succeed in the next grade. I will always remember my days at Vista Grande. Last year, I participated in History Day, in which I won the state championship. Through this process, I learned about America's past, which has made history come alive for me. Also last year, I came before this very same board, and through Project Citizen, we got the entire district to change their policy on Styrofoam trays. No other elementary school can say that. All the future generations of students deserve the same opportunities as I have had. Please do the right thing and keep our distinguished school open. And we had some students write some letters to the board to say not to close it.
Thanks very much.
Good evening. Marvin matters. My name is Nora Connolly. My daughter graduated from Marvin Elementary. My son is currently enrolled in the fourth grade at Marvin Elementary. He's in a seminar program, a program for high-functioning students. Marvin is one of only two schools in our cluster offering seminar. The other one is completely full to capacity. If Marvin closes, what happens to those children? Are we denied because we don't live in 92037? We are a family in this community, and above all, we are Americans, and we will fight until you lock the gate, and afterwards, at the ballot box. Thank you.
My name is Luke Sepurak, and I am nine. I'm in fourth grade at Marvin Elementary, and Ms. Johnson is my teacher. I would like to graduate from Marvin with my friends, like my sister did. I get good grades. I scored 600 in the math star test. I finished fifth grade learning upgrade in math already, even though I'm in fourth grade. If I try harder, will you let us stay open? Because I will. I'm not even done. Will you look at me and remember me and my friends? Give us a chance. We want to finish school together. Don't do this, please. Thank you.
I'm Berenice Walker, and our children are our future, and Vista Grande is doing a fantastic job of preparing them to excel and challenge themselves to be better, as you have seen. Vista Grande is Title I distinguished school with a 912 API that is closing its gaps. As a middle school teacher, I know firsthand how hard it is, how hard this task can be, and the staff at Vista Grande should be commended. What these teachers are doing in the classroom is working, and why are we changing something that has proven itself to work year after year? Even though Vista Grande is my local school, I have chosen to send my kindergartner to Vista Grande because of its academic excellence. I know that my son will be mentally challenged every day and is becoming a lifelong learner. Please be an advocate for our children and support Vista Grande to remain open. Our students deserve the best education that we can offer them, and Vista Grande provides this for our students. Please help keep Vista Grande open. Thank you.
Dixie Blakey, Marilyn Rivas, Summer Pollard, Sharon Lackman, Holly Junell, Carrie Park, and Cindy Brand. Please go ahead.
My name is Dixie Blake, and I'm here on behalf of Franklin Elementary. I'm a volunteer there. This is my seventh year, and I'm one of 40 volunteers who last year gave 2,000 hours to one-on-one tutoring for the children. What can I say about this process that you've initiated here? We're caught in a logistical nightmare. Our first notice of this was 15 days ago. Franklin has dedicated parents, most of whom don't speak English. Our Hoover Cluster has many wonderful things happening, including the City Heights Partnership for Children, which this board endorsed last meeting. It's a new, wonderful program. We want to be a part of that. Franklin wants to be a part of that. The Hoover Cluster is not set up to provide you the input you want in the time that we've been given. Our parents don't understand what's going on. They are supposed to come up with recommendations. All they know is their children are crying. I can only plead on behalf of these parents to call a moratorium on this process for all of the schools here. We're all in this together. Your first line of duty should be, do no harm. Please do no harm to our schools.
I'm Marilyn Rivas, retired teacher, Franklin. Ron Bennett began his talk by saying that bad ideas get hatched in Sacramento, too. They at one time thought selling property, but they realized that it was a bad idea, and they dropped it, he said. At Franklin, our students walk to school, and they are thriving. It is too far for them to walk to the next closest school. They would be going across I-15. Taking a temporary situation and making a drastic, permanent problem for the community is not the solution. Franklin was opened in 1928. Do you want to be remembered as a school board that closed this historic school? Once our precious assets are gone, they are gone forever.
Can I have my board? I can't have my board? My name is Cindy Brand Burton, and I'm-
My name is Cindy Brand Burton, and I'm an attorney, but more importantly, I'm a mother of two boys who attend Vista Grande. I completely agree with everything that everybody here has said about how great our school is, but the reason I'm here is because I want to talk about the fundamentally unfair way that we were added to the list for closure. We were told over and over that not only were we not even being considered for closure, that we were certainly not on the list. In fact, on September 20th, Phil Stover wrote an email to our school staff and told them that we were not being considered at all for closure. Less than a week ago, we found out at a meeting that now we are on the school closure list. Your own slides that you put up here say that you, we have been given an opportunity to come and discuss the closure with the proper people, and that is in fact untrue. At that meeting on October 17th was the first time that any of us learned that our school was on the list, and none of us were there because we had no idea that we were on the list. I believe it's a violation of the Brown Act to have done that, and I plan on writing a letter to your legal counsel about my belief in the violations of the law.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
No.
Ms. Jackson, you've asked us all to help you with the state...
Miss Brand, we can't, we cannot, we cannot.
We'd like to help you. If you just tell us what to do, we'll help you with the state, try to get us our money.
Thanks very much, yeah.
Hi, my name is Sharon Lackman, and I'm the elementary school assistant at Coverly. I believe with my whole heart, the purpose of a school is to educate children in a safe and nurturing environment. Schools should give all children roots in the elementary setting and wings as they progress through middle school and high school. As this difficult decision is made, I am sure the climate of the school is taken into consideration. We are not all equal. There are schools who do not want to open their doors to all students. Coverly has always been a second-chance school for students. Coverly test scores are on the rise. Great strides in learning are taking place. Of course, the decision should consider the facility and a theras room for all students from one school to attend another school. For the sake of community, students from a closing site, if it should be us, should be permitted to attend one site, not several. Coverly has space to accommodate many more students. We have open arms and hearts for all students.
Hi, my name is Holly Janelle, and I have a son that goes to Coverly Elementary. I did go to my neighborhood school for two years prior, and last year, they came to me and asked me to find my son a new school. I then chose Coverly out of many, many days of deliberation. I found the school had raised in, in score standards, and they were number one, one of the number top in math. I am pleading with you, please do not close Coverly. This is the first home my, my son has found a family in. Thank you.
Brad Saval, Brian Cottensato, Frank Engel, Donna Vaughn, Denise Roldan Newell, Jamil De La Paz, and Greg Birch.
Hi, my name is Brad Saval, and I have a son at Coverly Elementary School. However, I am not here in support necessarily of Coverly Elementary School, but to make a statement about the policies of this board. Specifically, there are exceptional students, teachers, and parents at every school. We've seen that from all the people talking here this evening. One of the biggest factors in school success is parent involvement. The best way to keep parents involved in schools is to keep kids local. The current policies, the current school choice policies under this, under this board and the previous boards disrupts that continuity. It's very difficult to have parents be involved in their schools when half of the students in this city are being shipped all across the school. So what I'm asking this board to do is to reconsider the school choice policy. There are of course going to be success stories about the school choice, but you disrupt communities and you take parents out of the school. Thank you very much.
Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Frank Engel, SSC Chair at Franklin Elementary, and I'm seriously concerned about the protocols followed by the closure committee. I have two main points. Point one, transparency. The closure group includes no teachers, parents, or community members, had no published meeting times, minutes, or rules shared with stakeholders in nine months, and has conflict of interest issues within its membership. Point two, analysis protocols. The committee took five items, weighed them equally, summed the totals, ranked the schools, and made recommendations from the data. The straight-line method of analysis ignored student achievement by closing multiple 800-plus API, non-PI schools in troubled clusters like Franklin Elementary, where the Hoover Cluster were one of two schools in the Hoover Cluster that are over 800, and discriminated against poorer demographic areas to the benefit of higher-income areas. As a member of two tiger teams that exhaustively studied data and made extensive recommendations as a cross-district team based on analysis, it's irresponsible for this committee to present school closure recommendations for achieving schools based on simplistic straight-line method by a closed committee that ignores both student achievement and cluster conditions. I urge you to reject the clo...
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Kova. My name is Donna Vaughn. My address is 6340 Decanter Street in San Diego. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Coverly Elementary, and I am here to speak on behalf of the Coverly students, staff, and community. In the past year, we have shown remarkable academic progress by raising our overall API score by sixty-three points from 780 to API 843. We were also one of two elementary schools in our district that showed a double-digit gain in math scores. Beyond the academics, Coverly Elementary is a family-friendly school that offers many opportunities for the development for the whole child. We have a fully-staffed counseling department that supports our main, our many-character-building programs. Even though busing was taken away from Coverly, all of the families impacted have managed to find ways of continuing their attendance here. Coverly Elementary is a beautiful school situated on a very expansive spot. I urge you to come and see it.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Denise Roldan Newell, and I'm a Kensington resident, and I'm one of the parents that, as of last week, I was considering, I have a four-year-old son, and as of last week, I was considering either sending my child to private school or sending him away to another public school. But today, I'm supporting Franklin Elementary School. If you're, if you're familiar with Kensington, you'll know that people that live in Kensington proper do not send their kids to Franklin, but what I'm here to offer to you today is a solution. What can I do as a parent that can afford? Mr. Barnett is saying, give, you know, for those parents that can't afford, I'm willing to give my, my piece of the pie, but convince me that I should be investing in public education. And, and closing Franklin Elementary School is not a solution, and as much as neither closing these schools. So convince us that, that we should be investing in public education, and I'm here to support you, so thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jamil De La Paz, and I'm a parent. This year, we chose our son to Coverly after a year from the neighborhood school. We are actually driving a good eleven miles just to be in this school. For the first time, my son's classmates are coming and calling him their friends. He never had that before. You see, my son has autism, and he never knew the meaning of friendship until we, we moved him to Coverly. You see, to be a part of something, to belong, is new to us. We never felt that from other schools, but we found it here at Coverly Elementary, among his classmates, his teachers, the principal, the principal, and from everyone else that is part of this school, which is Coverly. I do not want to close by wishing that you find it in your heart to keep the school open. Wishing just might fall on deaf ears. Instead, I am asking you what we, the parents and the faculties, can do to help keep it open.
Good evening. My name is Greg Beish. As Chair of Marvin's SSC, we have worked hard to continually develop all of our children. As evidenced by Marvin's API score, we have continually met this challenge despite the ongoing funding cuts from state and the district. This is a credit to the effectiveness of Marvin's teachers and the bond they have with the children and the parents. The proposal before you is short-sighted and not fully thought-through. If you close Marvin, where will these 343 children go? All of them to one school or broken up based on capacity? How will taking them out of a familiar environment, dividing them up from their friends, and placing them elsewhere affect their social development and their school performance? I ask again, where will these children go? Here's some information on the nearest three schools according to your own data. Kirst has similar performance, but is already at full capacity. Foster has capacity but scores significantly lower and is projected to be closed in round two of the school closures. Is part of the proposed solution to bounce the children from Marvin to Foster only to close Foster a year later? I find that unacceptable, and I think you should, too. Daleard has similar performance, but according to the committee's analysis, has only moved 48 students. Where do the other 298 go?
Thank you.
I encourage you to reject this proposal until you get additional information, which you need to make as a board.
Okay, Mara Albritton, Angela Forman, Dennis Shamp, Amy Monroe, Jennifer Sprofera. Go ahead, please. Yes.
Good evening. I thank you for your time. My name is Angela Forman, and I have a son who's in kindergarten at Marvin Elementary. I'm fairly new to all of this.
Angela, maybe just lift the microphone.
Lift the microphone?
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. My son is a fourth-generation native San Diegan. He is the third generation to be born in Allied Gardens. This is virtually unheard of. I mean, there are not many families who stay within the same community, within the city of San Diego. I feel Marvin needs to stay open because I went to Marvin, my mother went to Marvin, we had the same sixth-grade teacher. Yeah. I am a productive member of society. I have a strong sense of community, and I believe that I do because of Marvin and Lewis Junior High, Patrick Henry High School, and the cluster. If Marvin goes away, my parents lived and owned the house across the street from Marvin Elementary School. It's just devastating, it would be devastating to the community.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Good to see you again. I'm here to say that Crown Point counts. I've come before this board five times now, always for the same reason, to preserve a successful program at a dynamite school. We all see the dire state of the district's financial situation, but it seems like the district, county, and the state have all put us in this position with past decisions that they've made. Now it's come down to the very students and the very places they attend school. The board is telling us school closures are necessary and to set forth criteria for recommendations which, of which sites to shutter, but the recommendations don't align with the criteria set forth, and they're clearly in violation of state and district guidelines for school closure. The realignment committee tells us that property values aren't part of the consideration, but with five sites in two coastal communities, we find that incredibly hard to believe. Mr. Barnett, you've said we should preserve programs that work. Crown Point is a program that works. We've worked so hard and fought so hard to achieve our success. Don't upset that balance now.
Thank you. Okay, Andrea Cameron, Jennifer Anderson, Eileen Rupe, Kelly Doolin, and Jennifer Upton. Rebecca Rothstein, Jeff Weiderkin, Nancy Lemaroy, Mr. Luks, and Raul Cadenya.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Cameron. My daughter Siobhan is, for the most lack of better words, medically-challenged kid at Crown Point. In March of 2011, 911 had to be called for her. If it weren't for the visually-accessible corridors we have, nobody would have known she went into adrenal crisis. The proximity of the firehouse to our school and the small campus are what saved her life. The four different sites to park on and the multiple entry points also saved her life. Mr. Stover, you should know kids with special needs need stability. These are just a few of the reasons that Crown Point should stay where it is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Doolin. I'm a parent at Crown Point. I just want to point out regarding, first of all, thank you for letting our children play today and appreciating our program. Regarding the move to Bayview Terrace, I just want to point out that Crown Point is a neighborhood school and a choice school, we're a magnet K through three, resident four through five. Crown Point is the only school south of Grand, so don't move us. The other schools have already closed. Nobody has talked about the enormous nightmare of traffic. There's 35,000 cars on Grand every day. If you move Crown Point 270 students to Bayview, move 400 students from the middle school to the high school, plus those bus-in students that may choose to now drive in, you're creating a traffic nightmare, and that really needs to be looked at. We are told that you want to move us due to capacity. Well, we can take in 100, 200 kids. We used to have 966 children.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Upton. My children go to Crown Point Junior Music Academy, and I'm also the PTA president. Thank you for having them perform. That was so wonderful, and thank you for supporting our music program and, and wanting us to grow. We really appreciate that. As part of the PTA, we have a historian, and I had these great shots that were 63-years-old of our school, but the main point, but I can't bring them up because they're not eight-and-a-half by 11. At one point, Crown Point was the largest elementary school in San Diego, and it had 1,500 students. Another clip from the newspaper said it had 966 students, and then another one was 504 when it just opened. So we do have room. We can figure things out, and we would really not like to move because moving will cause a lot of upheaval, and it's hard enough as it is, so we really don't want to move. Thank you.
What's up? My name's Monica Garcia. I have four children attending Crown Point Junior Music Academy. Moving the Crown Point program from its current location will stress the stability of the program. If moved, staff and parents may not follow the program, which would alter the dynamics of the leading, which would alter the dynamics leading to diminished quality of the programs and the success of the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a six-years-old daughter who has been at CPJ MA from preschool.
Can you just give us your name, please?
My name is Nancy Lemaroy.
Thank you.
You just saw that we have a magnificent program that is working. It is really working. You saw it this evening. Why are you touching and changing something that is having a real success? How can you throw away every effort and sacrifices we have been doing, not only for weeks or months, but for years to have what we have now? Thanks for listening.
Can you do me a favor? I need a translator. Please. La educación es la única herencia que podemos dejar a nuestros hijos. Ah, mi nombre es Griselda Perez. La educación es la única herencia que podemos dejar a nuestros hijos. Y para mí, la mejor opción es Crown Point, porque quiero que mi hijo estudie el violín, guitarra, aprenda piano. La comunidad en Crown Point nos apoya, ya que quieren que no cierren las escuelas porque eso hace que la comunidad sea completa. No queremos que esta parte de esta escuela se convierta, la vendan y pueda ser, puedan poner ahí una barra, una cantina, porque no queremos a muchachos alcohólicos, queremos niños entusiastas para estudiar. niños entusiastas para estudiar. Queremos estudiantes bien preparados, no queremos homeless. Y esta escuela y cada una de estas escuelas tiene la calidad y la excelencia para cada uno de sus hijos. Y you are here in this seat because your school didn’t close and your parents taught in yours and they have yours. Please, don’t close any school.
Good evening, I will be interpreting for Ms. Perez. Hi, I am, education is the only inheritance that we can leave our children and for me, the best option and for the interest of our students is Crown Point. And for us, as well as many other parents. The community supports us since we don’t want the schools to be closed and that will be, oh, because that leaves the community complete. What we don’t want, we don’t want you to close the school because we believe, we don’t know what’s going to be there. It could be bars, it could be pubs, or something that will not, that will hurt the future of the students. And we don’t want any students or any people that are alcoholics or bad examples to be in our community. We want students that are well-prepared and we don’t want homeless people. Each school has quality and excellence. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Jackie Nipper, Ms. Burton, Ms. Martinez, Ms. Rachel, Peter Bedford, Chris Martin, Kimijo Trout, Ms. Italia, Ms. Estrada.
Good evening, I’m Jackie Nipper and I’m a mom at Crown Point Junior Music Academy. I am also a Mission Beach resident. And I feel as a Mission Beach resident, we’re sort of, we got a problem. Years ago, we had Mission Beach Elementary School, it is now closed, and for some reason there’s a bunch of tractors there today. It’s in dilapidated state of repair, it looks terrible. Then we had Farnham Elementary School, it is now closed. Crown Point Junior Music Academy is the school that my daughter and I ride our bicycles to every day. And unfortunately, because of the economics this year, we have one car. So riding a bicycle is our option on how we get to school. It is the only school south of Grand and Garnett. I just don’t understand the logic and why we would want to close that school, especially now that it is doing so amazingly well. I have to admit, there was a time that I was not very fond of Crown Point because it didn’t seem to have the grade level or the standards that it has now. It is an amazing school and it’s an amazing facility. Closing it just doesn’t make any sense. It doesn’t support Mission Beach community.
Hi, everyone, thank you for your time. My name is Italia Gray. I am a Pacific Beach resident, I’m also a Crown Point parent. And when I found out my son got into Crown Point, I felt like I won the lottery, and in fact, I did, since the magnet school, but I really felt very special. Want to remind that everybody at Crown Point is because we want to be there. It doesn’t have a designated neighborhood, no, but everybody who is there is making all the efforts to be there. As a Pacific Beach resident, I’d like to remind you that if you close Crown Point Elementary, there are no other schools south of Grand Avenue. What is that going to do to the fabric of the Pacific Beach community? I know many people in that residence area that do not want the school closed, even though they don’t have children, but they want to have the use of the joint use area. They like the idea of having a school there because it keeps a healthier community. Without the school there, it would really damage the fabric of South PB. We do not want to have always the stigma of being a party town. We have families there. We really like PB. Thank you.
Okay, Rich Thessing, John Gopher, Adrian Fay, Sabrina Ayers, Deborah Sund, Scott Lindbeck.
Thank you, I’ve already spoken, thank you.
Oh, thanks, thanks very much.
My name is Adrian Fay. My son goes to Vista Grande and we are within its boundaries, we are going to our home school. I just want to point out that on the California Department of Education’s website, it outlines best practices when considering a school foreclosure. Under Chapter Two, Deciding Which Schools to Close, it states, “There can be a site-related high achievement school based upon innovative facility design and dynamic staff and just the right mixtures of students. Often, these high achievement schools are unique and perhaps may be hard to reconstruct at other locations. In Vista Grande’s case, the dynamic staff, the unique programs, and children are what makes Vista Grande an API 912, a California distinguished school. Vista Grande should be an example to others and not closed. Please put academics first when considering the closures.”
I am Sabrina Ayers, I am a Vista Grande parent. My Vista Grande student has a language-based learning disability which affects her hearing and reading comprehension, verbal articulation, writing skills, and ability to properly communicate her thoughts. She works with a team of staff at Vista Grande, not just her mainstream teacher. She works with speech, occupational therapy, RTI, and special education pullout. She is a second grader who has been at Vista Grande since kindergarten and only this year has she begun to fully cooperate with her team. She needed the continuity and familiarity to build trust in her team and they needed time to learn how to best engage her. There are other stories like mine at Vista Grande. Can you guarantee that our children will get the same quality of teamwork when they are relocated to different schools? I can’t imagine that anyone would be surprised to see our children’s test scores and their IEP goals go unmet. Losing Vista Grande would disrupt the continuity and stability that is so important to our students’ academic success.
Hi there, my name is John Gopher. I have two kids that attend Marvin Elementary School, a first grader and a third grader. I have a third grader who is in the Gate Program. Both of my kids are going to the school that’s in their neighborhood, it’s about 20 houses from where I live. I understand you guys have to make tough choices, but you have to make wise choices and you’re not making a wise choice by closing Marvin. The California Department of Education’s Closing a School Best Practices Guide says you have to make your decision based on hard empirical evidence that leads to a broadly-supported, incontrovertible conclusion that the district cannot afford to keep a school open. Mr. Stover, you talked about intangibles, I have no idea what you’re talking about. I’ve never been to a meeting regarding clusters, I never got notice of a meeting. I don’t know anyone at Marvin that got notice of a cluster meeting where you were going to discuss closing our school. I don’t think, the only way I found out is in the newspaper last Friday that my school would be closed. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Sund, I’m a third-generation property taxpayer in San Diego. I’m an alumnus of San Diego Unified School District, I’m a teacher at Coverley Elementary and a parent of a special needs student at Kearney. Our campus currently has nine available classrooms which would be enough to combine another campus with our cluster, with a site from our cluster and to accommodate the new housing development at Sevita. We welcome special needs students and serve a large population of students with IEPs. Our staff has received extensive training to support the inclusive model. If our students are scattered, which they will be if they have to move, they’ll lose the extra support that we’ve later to provide out of our own budget, grants, and community researches which include tutoring with retired teachers, aides from the Everyone a Reader Program, college assistants. Even if the new sites would be able to provide these interventions, it would take weeks or months to review the IEPs, get the supports and interventions up and running, and to build the rapport that’s essential for working with special needs students. Our kids can’t afford to lose that continuity.
Hello, my name is Scott Lindbeck, I’m PTA. I’ve been PTA president for the last eight years, as well as treasurer at Coverley Elementary. I also have three boys that go there or will attend next year. Coverley has been recommended to close and to split its students between Wegaforth and Juarez. Wegaforth has been put on the list to be closed, possible closure in the next few years. Wegaforth has now been set up to fail the same way that Coverley was three years ago when we were put on the list. No families from Coverley are going to attend Wegaforth. That leaves us all to go to Juarez, knowing they may close after experiencing this year. Wegaforth will now continue to lose its students and it’s going to end up having to close also. My suggestion is that you merge Coverley and Wegaforth onto Coverley’s campus. Coverley has room where it can accommodate 425 to 510 students depending on your class size of 25 to 30 students. All those teachers and students from those schools will be able to stay together, they’ll be familiar with each other, they’ll all know each other. Coverley has an art corps program where all students receive eight programs of art lessons
Michelle Baldwin, Kimberly Giordano, Maria Cortez, Fred Baldwin, Dwayne Walker, Susan Wilding.
Hello, I’m Maria Cortez. Thank you guys for meeting with us. I am a concerned grandparent about the closing of Franklin School. This school is a great and wonderful community school. We have a high API test score, it’s 825. Aren’t we supposed to try to keep our schools and community together? My thought also was, are we keeping our kids, we are keeping our kids safe. Where our school is, where our school is, it is in a safe community. We look out for each other, our students would have to travel a mile across Alcohom Boulevard or across Alcohom Boulevard, which itself isn’t a hazard. The nearest schools that we have are like maybe what, a mile point six, maybe two miles? My grandson goes there, my daughter went to school there, she’s now 28. My grandson goes there now and I’m hoping to have my granddaughter, my granddaughter going there. I would also like to let you know that we, we at Franklin also have 40 volunteers in the classroom every week. So please, don’t close us down.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak this evening. We all appreciate the jobs you’ve been tasked with and I can’t imagine anyone being envious of the positions you’re in. We all realize everything-
Just give us your name.
I’m sorry, I’m Fred Baldwin. I live in Allied Gardens, I own a home there, my daughter does go to our home school, Marvin. We all realize something needs to be done, so everyone’s jockeying for their own school. We would just like you to consider the signs behind you. The middle word is succeed. For, in order for our kids to succeed, let’s let them go to the best schools possible, schools like Marvin, which outranks most of the, the majority of their other schools in the cluster and has a higher attendance than 20 other, four of the other schools in the district. Just please choose widely and inflict the least amount of damage on our future, our children.
My name is Susan Wilding and I have some issues with some of the criteria that was used on the Mission Bay Cluster. By closing Crown Point Elementary Campus and moving the program over to Bayview Terrace, you are disrupting the Bayview Terrace schools. It’s approximately 173 children if you don’t have the busing. These children will have to navigate past Grand and Garnett Avenue and Ingram Streets in order to go to Sessions Elementary and PB Elementary. Because Crown Point is a magnet, they are not going to be accepting these Bayview Terrace children. Are you going to provide transportation to these kids if the parents can’t provide the transportation for them? Sessions Elementary has a current enrollment of 397 with excess capacity of 69. The argument that out-of-area children will be eliminated is inaccurate. The children who come to Sessions have choiced in, they will be leaving next year. Sell Mission Beach Elementary for 12 to 14 million dollars and leave us alone.
Okay, Holly Foster, Kathy Jolly, Eve Anderson, Diana York, Ursula Owens, Mariano Alberto, Ruba Falconi, Brian Ray Schutman, and Jan Hinsman.
Good evening, board members, thank you for this opportunity. I’m Holly Foster, a parent, I have a student at Mission Bay High School and I’ve been an active supporting parent in Mission Bay Cluster for the last 15 years. I’m here to talk about the issue of realignment of Pacific Beach Middle School and the high school. Realignment at this time seriously puts at risk the IB diploma at our, at Mission Bay High School. We need, the certification requires very specific kinds of courses and numbers of students to have those courses. I would like, respectfully like to request that Mission Bay High and Pacific Beach Middle receive a waiver and exemption from restrictions on busing until we can further evaluate and determine the specific core, the specific impact of the realignment on our hard-won IB program. And our cluster again has closed two schools. Let us keep our, our hard-won community support. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Jolly, I live in the Crown Point area of Pacific Beach. I am not a cluster parent, I’m a resident and an advocate for my community. I’m here to remind you that this is not just about moving three or 400 kids across Pacific Beach, it is about the health and wellbeing of my community. My friends and neighbors have worked long and hard to make PB a better place for children and families. The juggling act that you propose would decimate my community. You are talking about, you’re all talking about the importance of neighborhood schools, then leave our schools in our neighborhoods. Also, it is not gone unnoticed that the one school that you have closed and are planning to sell and the two schools that you are planning to close and possibly sell are the most expensive properties in our cluster. Combined with the proposed Point Loma closures, these are some of the most valuable properties in your district. Clearly, property value does factor into your decisions.
Hi, I’m Brian Ray Schutman from Allied Gardens. My, four kids went to Marvin and the school has celebrated its 50th anniversary recently and now my grandson is in first grade there. Marvin children are happy to go to school, their learning test scores are going up, Marvin’s doing what it was built to do. Kids get a great education, they form relationships with their peers and develop a sense of belonging to a larger community. Your realignment committee recommended you close Marvin purportedly to save $500,000 for general use. There was no involvement of Marvin parents, no opportunity for us to help you develop other sources of finance. The whole thing is a terrible idea to close good schools. We’re here because we care about public schools as you do. Marvin parents committed to help you with better solutions. It’s a mistake to close Marvin or any well-functioning schools. Please reject this very destructive idea. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Eve Anderson, North Pacific Beach. I was the co-chair for the Beach Coalition for Farnham in the mid-eighties. The school board in its wisdom decided it was going to lease the former Farnham property for 99 years in order to build condos. The local residents got rightly upset, formed the Beach Coalition. One of our members was a young attorney who did his research and he said, “Wait a minute, you guys have to offer this to other governmental agencies, you didn’t do it.” We sued the school district and we won. We had a beautiful library built there. City never gave us any money. That money came from donations from Vern and Mary Taylor. Pacific Beach has never gotten anything. Our schools were built in the 50s, you’ve hardly touched them over the years. Another factor, you’ve heard about the safety. Mission Beach was closed, Farnham was closed. Now the kids are going to Crown Point, you heard how really unsafe it is, sending them all the way over to the freeway, just about. And one last thing, we have more young children moving in. I have a young family just moved in a couple of months ago with a two-year-old and an infant. Your demographics are way off. We’re getting families coming for Crown Point and the International Baccalaureate Program. Don’t kill what works.
Hello, my name is Jan Hinsman and I live in none of these communities, but I’ve been listening tonight and feeling so sad, as you must feel, at pitting one community against another. I’m hoping that you can work together- I'm hoping that you can work together as a board to take the reality of insufficient funds to the state and to the people of San Diego so that we can move forward to a solution that does not destroy families, school, communities. And I'm also, would like to challenge you to think about, you've been thinking of this project as a, as a cost savings, but there are many costs, I'm sure you've heard tonight, to accomplish some cost savings. What does it cost to accommodate students at alternative campuses? I mean, you had the same kind of discussion with the transportation, but do you really understand the costs that would be required to accomplish some of these changes? What additional staff costs will a combined classrooms require, what ongoing costs? And I'll give you the rest of my testimony.
All right, thanks very much. All right, I thank everybody who's, who's come and, and spoken. All right, board questions, comments? Dr. Evans?
No.
Nope.
I was going to move to adjourn.
Yeah.
I just had one question on the schedule.
Yeah. Schedule for tonight?
No, unless there's a motion to not close any schools and that passes, then I can resolve talking about it any further. But right now the schedule calls for a first reading November 29th and a workshop December 6th. I think we should reverse this because why would we have a first reading of recommendations? I'd rather, I think we should have the workshop first to hear back from the clusters, hear whatever their recommendations are based on the input. And then we could have a first reading and then we still could, you know, whatever that is, change it for the second reading.
I think it's a good idea.
But I know the times of these dates might have to change because of the, because of the time involved in a workshop.
Yeah, I think a workshop is what we need. I mean, we need to go through each of these schools and ask questions. So is there consensus about doing the workshop first?
Yes.
And let them work out the dates, which works with our calendars and all that. That's the only-
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brunin. Any others, any other board comments?
No, I just think we have to, is the right way to analyze, to have a workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's really important to point out that at this meeting, there's no vote, no action item, that the committee is still developing their process. And I think that it was mentioned earlier that I have not seen the final list of recommendations from the committee. I have not made a final decision on any of those specific items yet. I'm waiting. I want to be very deliberate and very thoughtful and allow the committee the opportunity to develop recommendations. And at that point in time then, I think it would be appropriate for me to question the methodology, why certain schools got passed over and other schools did not. The equity issue of the geographic despair, the geographic allocations of, you know, wondering why there are certain, a lot of schools that are identified in one particular sub-district. And, and so I have a lot of questions and, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold back on a lot of my questions and concerns until after I see the full report.
Yeah, and we'll, you know, we'll have our comments and go through our questions at the, at the workshop. I just, I, I believe that we need to approach, you know, this, this process very, very carefully. And, and we've talked about that, you know, from the outset of this process, but this is not a new conversation either. I know that when John and I first came on to the board, there was an existing committee looking at school closures and we each appointed a person to that committee and the person that I appointed, his, well, his analysis very quickly was, he doesn't believe in, in closing any of the schools on the list because the analysis that hadn't been done, and this is absolutely a set of questions that I'm going to ask, is we're claiming that the savings per school is roughly half a million dollars. Relatively small amount in the scheme of things that we're, that we're dealing with. And what I think we have to ask ourselves is, what is the likelihood that the closure of any one of these schools, similar to what we just talked about with transportation, will lead families to leave the district? To either leave the district to go to a charter school, to go to a private school, to go outside the district? What is the prospect of, you know, a school potentially being closed that would actually lead the school community to convert to a charter school? What's the prospect that if we close a school and we have an empty campus, a charter school is going to come in and occupy that campus and therefore people in the community are likely to go to that charter school? I, I think there's a serious risk of losing revenue even as we potentially save costs from, and so every one of these schools, you know, that we walk through that, that analysis, I'm going to begin with that question, you know, what's the, what's the potential loss of revenue, you know, from, from taking the action of closing the school? Number one. And then number two, everything that we do is about a balance between the need to save money to ward off insolvency and everything that comes with insolvency versus the impact on kids. I mean, we're hearing, you know, from, from schools tonight that are doing tremendous work for kids. So, you know, in the same way that we fight hard to keep our class sizes low because of the impact on kids, to keep our music education program available because of the impact on kids, for the same reason that I have opposed the further cutback on transportation because the impact it would have on particular schools that are doing a great job for kids, there is a line that is crossed, that if we cross that line, yeah, we're saving money, yeah, we're doing something, albeit, you know, potentially not a lot in this case to ward off insolvency, but at the same time, we are damaging something that's, you know, that's extremely valuable to kids. And I think we've got to, so, you know, I approach every single one of these closure decisions and each of them have to be made individually with a, with a high degree of skepticism. Are we really talking about efficiency? Are we talking about a situation we've talked about in the past where the example would be of a North Park Elementary where by closing that school, kids actually had access to better programs at, at a couple of schools really within, within walking distance? Are we talking about a situation like that? And there's probably going to be a few situations like that. Or are we talking about doing something that just inflicts tremendous damage on kids? That it's just not going to be the case that the kids are going to have a better alternative? We're going to make, we're going to make things worse on kids, you know, as, as having made the closure decision? And then are we going to save any money from having done it? And part of that analysis is, how much revenue are we putting at risk? And I apologize for, you know, using that sort of bottom-line analysis, but if people leave the district, we lose revenue and therefore where's the savings? How does that help, you know, in the, in the, in the goal of staving off insolvency? So I think we've got a lot of work to do. I approach it with a lot of skepticism with every single one. Some, I'm sure, you know, will, you know, will, will go through the questions, go through the analysis and there'll be some recommendations that come forward, you know, on the, at the workshop and then later that probably will get, my support will get, you know, support, you know, perhaps of a majority of the board. But I think it's going to be rare. And, you know, and again, I just think we need to be aware of what we're doing as a school district by engaging this amount of energy and creating this amount of anxiety for a solution that ultimately is about a few million dollars in a crisis that's, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars and perhaps, you know, over 100 millions, million dollars. We have to be very careful about that. I also just would say, of course, we've got to be wise and, you know, think about what we can do from a real estate perspective to bring in revenue to the district long-term when we truly do have surplus property that there's a better use for. But the solution to the budget crisis, short-term and long-term, is not to close schools so the district can go into the real estate business. That's not why we have the real estate in the first place. We have the real estate because taxpayers invested in building schools. So, you know, the purpose of a school site, first and foremost, we've got to think about, it's a school site, it's a place to educate kids. And, and I think one of the speakers talked about, there's a very clear process that we have to go through in terms of if we actually choose to dispose of a property, we've got to make it available to other public agencies first. I don't believe in simply selling off public assets to the, to the private sector as a, as a budget fix. The solution to our budget crisis is all of us working together to fight for revenue from the state. That's going to solve this budget crisis. So, anyway, that, that, that's my frame of mind as we enter, as we go through the workshop and go through this analysis. Okay, any other comments, board members? Thank you. Why don't we take-
Can I just have a question?
Yes, Mr. Stover.
I want to make sure I'm clear. I don't quite understand the change in the dates in the workshop. You want a workshop before we bring any recommendations?
Yes.
But what would you discuss?
Before the first, before the first reading.
Before the first reading.
But there won't be any recommendations at that point?
Recommendations to the workshop.
So what, okay.
We've got two dates, November 29th and December 6th.
Right.
I think what we're, and December 6th is, is a workshop. I think what we're saying is-
Bring, keep the recommendations on the 29th, but make that a workshop.
Or another day for the workshop if that's a regular board meeting where you, we need several hours, I think-
Yeah, that's right.
For both feedback from each of the clusters, whatever their recommendations may or be. And we can ask questions and based on your initial proposals out to the community. And then we'll have a workshop and based on that, the board may span the list, eliminate the list, narrow it, and then go to a first reading, which we then would get more public input in, and then final decision.
So, so I'm still not clear. I'm sorry, I'm just, it's late, but I'm still not clear. The 29th of November is the date to provide you the initial recommendations. You're saying that would not change, but the, that would be a workshop instead of, or you want the recommendations prior to the, I mean, we're, we're getting a lot of feedback that the timeframe is short enough as it is.
Yeah.
If we should, we have a whole Thanksgiving week there when we were on furlough and there's, you know, so that, that backs up providing you-
I think, I think what we're saying is, it's not going to be a very productive use of time or use of the community's time either to come to us on November 29th with a list of recommended closings. Because we're not going to have, if, if that's, again, like tonight, if that's in the context of a larger board meeting, we're not going to have time, people are going to want to come out, of course, and people are going to want to speak. And we're not going to have the time as a board to get into, you know, each of these situations.
Maybe we should have a Saturday, I'd say a half-day workshop on Saturday to just hear all the proposals, hear all the input, spend time answering questions, get our questions answered, and then based on that, you can bring it back to a regular board agenda based on whatever action we take for a first reading and then ultimately make a decision. So that's the only difference, I think.
But you were going to be, sorry, you were going to be prepared on the 29th to make the recommendations. So basically, on the 29th, we can have a workshop instead of a board meeting.
That's fine, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
Right. Well, it's, well, I don't mean instead of the regular board meeting, but we have a workshop sometime during that day and we would have the formal first reading the following week.
I think you can have your-
That's fine. Yeah, well-
But it's just, the issue is the order.
I'll agree we want a workshop before and let the president, Mr. Stover, when you both had cups of coffee, work out the logistics.
Yeah, that's, that's fair enough, makes sense.
I, I move that we move the remaining items to next week's special meeting.
Unless there's something that has-
I want to do, I want to do item I-9 because we do have five people here, which is always-
Oh, good, I'm glad you're all staying for sale of property, which I'm going to oppose. So, don't leave, the board's going to sell our asset, stay.
Let's, let's, can we get a, can we get a motion? Can we get a motion on item I-9?
I would move that we, we continue this item and the reason is, is because I believe a preliminary analysis that I've done shows that we can actually earn over $300,000 a year by getting revenues from parking on the site instead of a one-time sale to, which would then disappear. So that'd be my motion.
Is there-
You're in, just a question on your analysis there. Do you, have you already identified a company that would operate the parking and we would lease it? Or would we be the parking company? So we're going into the parking lot business. First, let's see if there's a second.
Well, I think, yes, I was seconded. I was seconded, not, and, and I'm seconding it for discussion purposes, but let me say this. I've said to the superintendent and prior superintendents, it's not just about selling our land, it's about generating revenue. And, and I would, I would prefer that we find ways to generate revenue using our land, whether it turns into a parking area or it turns into something else than to just sell it outright.
Let me just explain, first of all, the proposal is a $1.6 million one-time. The property right now has 110 parking spaces on it, it's striped, it's being used by the community college. We own it, as far as I know, we're not getting any revenue and it's there now. I'm not saying that, you know, we had, we had directed the staff this summer to go back and look at a couple of options before selling it. One was parking, one was, I said, the idea of a fast food restaurant and they never, as far as I can tell, did any analysis. Back of the envelope, 110 spaces, charge less than the city charges for their meters, 300 days a year is $330,000 and I'm just saying, you know, that's just back of the envelope. So I'm just saying, let's examine that and have an ongoing revenue stream and before we decide to unload a piece of property that we can generate, you know, lots of money on.
Right, I, I support that 100%. I think that if we can have a lease agreement or something like that with a parking lot company, then that's something that we ought to look at and get some more information on. Or if we, if we go into the parking lot business, then we have to ask ourselves, well, who's going to, who's going to police the parking lot and issue ticket citations for whatever and what's the fee?
I didn't include citations, by the way, in my revenue stream.
Can we hear, I think we need to look into it a little bit more thoroughly, but I agree that we should look at ongoing revenue.
Excuse me, I think there's a very important factor, you're, you're just kind of off-base on, no offense.
Yeah.
But on May 26, 2009, you voted to sell this property. You already voted to sell it, you voted two years ago to sell it.
And why is it on the agenda?
So it's on the agenda, it is on the agenda for a minor amendment to the agreement to sell it. You've already voted, May 26, 2009, to sell it. On June 7, 2011, you voted to remove a condition that was holding it all up to execute a long-term lease as a term of the sale. We've been in negotiations with the, with the college based on your vote, the board's vote in 2009. And now we brought to you a, a contractual amendment to that agreement. So you have, you would, and I know, I have to defer to our attorney, how you would undo your decision to sell it back in 2009. We have been negotiating since I've been in this position, in good faith with the college, to come to a final agreement based on, their, their, their board has voted numbers of times on this agreement. You have voted at least one, twice, twice on it.
Yeah.
And so what we really are bringing to you is not a decision to sell the property, it is a amendment. And Roy can get into more details about the specific of what the amendment is, but it's a minor, there was a typo.
Okay. And can I ask you, Mr. Stover, besides where we are in the process, is it your recommendation, and if so, why, that the best use of the property to the district is to sell it to the community college?
Well, I think, I think that this, this property, well, two reasons. I think one is, we've made, we have already made an agreement and gone way down the load, the road with the college. They're anticipating this and I think it's a matter of trust and integrity in what we've already been working through. Number two, and again, I would defer to the council, but my understanding is they can take this property if they want and give us the value of it at a current appraisal, which could be more or less. It was appraised back when values were higher.
The value will be higher when we have a parking revenue on it, actually.
It could appraise for less, so we may get no revenue out of it and not be able to use it for anything if the college, and Larry has, has-
We could also get more money out of it. We could get more if we have parking revenue. We could get more if we have parking revenue on it, a revenue stream of 300, which it doesn't have now.
Assuming they don't take it through eminent domain.
They could certainly do that.
All right, well, we've got Mr. Barnett's motion. If it passes, it passes. If it fails, I'm going to recommend the staff motion. So we've got a motion, a second, Mr. Barnett, which is to...
Before, before you vote on that motion, I guess the first question is, is it a valid motion if we've already, I'm asking our attorney this, because if we've already entered into a contract and need to finalize the contract, is it a valid motion?
I'm not even sure what the motion is, to be honest with you.
Can you repeat your motion?
The motion, yeah, I'm going to...
You mean you weren't listening to my...
I was listening, I was actually listening to it, and I'm not sure what the motion means.
What I, well...
I apologize.
I'm against the sale. I believe, I will vote against it. I'd like it not to proceed and then look at other options before we sell it. That's really what I would like, including my examining ongoing revenues that will in a very short time outstrip the one-time revenue we're going to have. So I was trying in my motion to explain my thinking, so...
So I understand that. I'm just saying that...
I would, my motion would be not to sell it and then pursue revenue-generating options. How about that?
Okay, so that's Ms. Jackson's question, which is mine also.
Right, because my...
Legally, where are we at this, with negotiations to sale of property?
This is really not a conversation for open session. I'll just say that.
Well, maybe we should continue it. I mean, one, you cannot require board members to vote in public on an item, right? I mean, then why are we here? We're not potted plants.
I can give you legal advice in open session, but I would prefer not to.
Well, let's continue the item.
We've got one speaker on this issue, Angela Forman. Is Angela still here? No. Okay. Is there any consequence to us delaying action tonight, discussing this in closed session next week?
Yeah, we'll make people mad at us.
My question was to our staff. Is there any, what do we, what do we lose by delaying action on this tonight and discussing it in closed session?
Yeah, I'm unaware of anything that we would lose. The real estate folks, do you know of any reason?
Okay, all right. So it sounds like we'll...
So can we start charging for the parking that they're charging for and they're getting revenues for? Can we start doing that tomorrow, you know?
Okay, and with that, Mr., Dr. Evans made a motion to continue all other items.
Except for items F-1 and F-2, as pointed out by Ms. Ward, I move to approve F-1 and F-2.
Second.
What are they?
F-1 and F-2, public hearing in the matter of certification, provision of standards aligned instructional materials, and public hearing resolution of certification of sufficient textbooks and/or instructional materials as outlined.
Was anyone pulling consent items? Why don't we just pull the consent?
Well, let's see, one at a time. So we've got F-1 and F-2.
Second.
Dr. Evans is moving second. All in favor?
Mr. President, you need to open the floor. It's a public hearing, so you need to ask if there's anybody who has any...
Motion to second, does anybody wish to speak to other of these items? No, thank you, Mr. Shanky.
I move the consent calendar, so we don't have to add it to the next agenda.
The superintendent's consent calendar be added to the next agenda.
No, I just would like to approve it, so we don't have to now, so we don't have to then have 77 items on the next consent agenda instead of just 37.
Okay, does any board member wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? If not, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Please vote. Okay.
Minutes? How about board minutes? I move board minutes?
Yeah, actually, sit down for a second, Mr. Barnett.
Yeah, let's just get through the things we don't need to...
Some move, whatever item it is, board minutes.
All right, let's, let's do this quickly. Motion to adopt the agenda tonight, item D-1.
We already did it. Some move.
Second.
Can I, there's one item that we do need to approve tonight regarding the easement, because if we don't do tonight...
It was part of the...
Was that an consent?
No.
What item is that?
I...
C. The easement one.
Are they doing that?
I move I-11.
G-1.
I-11.
I-11.
I-11, we've got a motion to second, please vote.
Okay.
Okay, I, actually, I just want to go through this and see if we can knock these out.
And then G-1, which is a minute, which is a maybe minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Second.
Motion to second, G-1, all in favor.
Vote for the minutes.
Item...
I just recall 13.
Item H-2, do we have a motion for item H-2?
What is H-2?
Adoption of the MOU with the administrators.
Ah, so moved.
What, what, what?
Item H-2.
MOU with ASD.
I-4?
About principal evaluations.
Yeah, what did we decide about that? I think I asked that question. Refresh my memory, please.
H-3?
Yeah, refresh.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we table that for the next one.
Item H-3, approve a tentative agreement with SDA and a special ed. This is negotiated tentative agreement.
This was set long ago, it's just a final copy to be approved.
All right, motion to second, all in favor. Item H-3, H-3.
What's I-4?
I-4, I's are for C.
What's nose 4?
Item I-4 is...
They're asking us to approve that tonight, please.
Some move.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion to second. Any comment or discussion? If not, please vote.
Thank you.
It's our first step into generating revenue and saving costs.
Those are the...
Item I-5, annual developer fee report for fiscal...
Is that an action item?
Yeah, it's an action item. It's usually on the consent agenda. It's pro forma.
Got a motion in the second, all in favor. Item I-10, report on disposition of certain excess real properties. Is there a motion in the second?
That is the R-5, both of them.
That's a report.
I'd like to hear the report.
All right, we'll move that to the next meeting.
Right, move that.
We just approved item I-11. It sounds like we're going to need to talk about item I-12, real estate management reorganization.
Yeah, pull it out.
Item I-13, we're going to want to discuss, I believe, and I-14. Okay, so including item, where did we skip over there? Item H-2, really? We have to discuss item H-2?
What's H-2?
Who can speak to item H-2?
The principal evaluation, what are we going, how are we going to evaluate? They might want to know.
Yeah.
We want to know.
What are we approving here, Mr. Shanky? Item H-2.
That's a good question, because Ms. DeBernardo's gone.
All right, we'll move it to the next meeting.